Ready? Ready to roll? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the North Hampton County Council Meeting of December 7th, 2017 to order. Please rise. I'd like to take a moment of silent prayer to remember those Americans who perished at Pearl Harbor on this date seventy-six years ago. Thank you. Now, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Sembo, can we call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Baxender?
Present.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
All are present this evening. First item is the approval of the minutes from the November 16th, 2017 council meeting, the November 8th, 2017 budget hearing, and the November 29th, 2017 budget hearing.
Motion acclamation.
Moved by acclamation by Mr. Kraft, seconded by Mr. Bennell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Then the first item on the agenda is a presentation by the North Hampton County Historical and Genealogical Society, and I see Mr. Kranzly is here. He could approach the podium and...
Good evening, council members. Good evening, good evening. I see you are holding copies of this beautiful book here. I know you have very weighty matters to speak of tonight, so it's an absolute pleasure to bring something celebratory to you to open the evening. My name is Carrie Birgel. I'm the Executive Director of the Siegel Museum of the North Hampton County Historical and Genealogical Society, and I just wanted to quickly say on behalf of our Board President, Mr. Andy Dob, who cannot be here with us tonight, our Board members and our members, that it is an absolute pleasure to bring you this six-year labor of love, this latest edition of the county history. The last one was published in 1953, and this has been a wonderful partnership between the historical society, the county. The council funded this entire project with a generous grant, so we thank you very much. And a partnership between an advisory committee made up of members of industry, business, education, and the community that Glenn was able to speak with over the years. So, thank you very much for your partnership and participation. I would like to introduce Glenn to everyone, so he can tell you a little bit about the book and his process before you start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, members of council, for giving us a few minutes tonight. You know, I was brought onto this project because of my professional experience. I worked in daily newspapers in Lehigh Valley for forty-one years and came to know the issues of Lehigh Valley and many of the personalities, too. And I'm happy to see Ms. Ferraro here tonight, because in my days at the morning call, she would come in when she was running for office and meet with us and seek our endorsement, and we gave it several times. But this project tonight is a result of more than ninety interviews with leaders around the community. I waded through public records, through newspaper clippings, all kinds of sources and information to put together the story of the changes that North Hampton County has seen since 1950. You'll see there's stories in here about our economy, how it's changed from heavy industry to high-tech medical care and the service industries. You'll see a story of a changing population. We used to be predominantly white. We're not predominantly white anymore, so there are stories about the minority populations that have come to call North Hampton County home and contribute to the life here in North Hampton County. There's stories about our education institutions, about our cultural institutions, sports and entertainment. So, I think I've pulled together a pretty encyclopedic story of where we are now in North Hampton County. So, I've brought copies for everyone. I've inscribed them. I owe a couple copies here, and I'll get them to you in fast order. And thank you. Thank you, County Council, for your support.
Well, one quick thing. If somebody would like to purchase this, how can they do so?
Thanks. They're on sale now at the Siegel Museum gift shop, and they're going to be available at Meravian Bookstore in Barnes &amp; Noble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then the next item is a presentation by the Miracle League.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rick Agretto, Vice President of Miracle League, North Hampton County. Today, we have with us our current President, Bob Lammy, and our new incoming President, Jennifer Dietrich. First and foremost, to the council members here this evening, I want to thank you for your past support of our Miracle League. You've all been giving handouts. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time. Many of you have been to our field. You know what we're all about and what we provide for those with intellectual and physical disabilities to play the game of baseball in a safe environment. And we are thriving. And as I walk you through very quickly, and just going to make a couple points in each one of these pages, when you see that your support is so much important to us, not only in the past, currently what we're looking at in your budget, and of course, we hope for the future. Our mission statement tells it all, to create a positive experience for those with intellectual and physical disabilities and their families through baseball. And I can tell you that we are thriving up at our field, and we have two seasons, and it's in the spring and in the fall. And the first bullet says, "We provide operational integrity through sustainable funding." We depend on funding from municipalities, from you, from the city of Easton, I believe...
Sal Pinck.
And Sal's here. So, we look forward to getting some money and continued money from Sal, because we call ourselves North Hampton County. We pride ourselves in having this field in North Hampton County. We also want you to know that we have increased our numbers in growth and development since our beginning in 2012, and we just celebrated our fifth year. John Brown was one of our guest speakers, and we had a fabulous day. We had Philly Fanatic there, and we had a number of speakers, and it was just a great day. If you turn the page, what was really important for us is that we've had an outreach program. When we began in the fall of 2012, we had a little bit under 100 athletes participating, registered with us. And the growth has been phenomenal. We're upwards of 312 registered athletes that come to our field. One of our partners is Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. They just came to our field, actually, to come visit on Monday, and they could not believe that we have that number of athletes that participate at our facility, because they have built special needs fields across this country, and they believe that the ones that they have seen up to date, that we are the second largest that they've come across. So, we were very much encouraged by the fact that we are gaining so many new players each and every year. And so, when we look at our major accomplishments in the past five years, you know, it's great for our parents to come out and be spectators, that they can sit back and they can watch their children with intellectual and physical disabilities play the game of baseball, something that they've never had an opportunity to do at our facility, and to be one-on-one with our volunteers, what we call buddies, to be able to help and support them and make new friendships, not only with their own teammates, but with the volunteers that come out and help us each and every game that we have. And we have over a thousand of volunteers each and every season that come out from various high schools, community sports programs, college programs, you name it, they come and they help. And we also have two directors, one that does our outreach to go and get our athletes. She happens to be North Hampton County Special Olympics Director, and she knows all the players, she knows all the parents, and she does a great job of outreach. And we also have another person who does our volunteer coordination, and that's so important to us, because we have to turn people away, because we want to maintain that one-on-one environment for our kids for their safety. What makes us a sustainable and successful program? Well, it's... The whole goal is to provide these kids an opportunity to play baseball. Every child deserves to play baseball, and we provide that venue for them in a safe environment where in their own communities, they don't have a facility to be able to support them in a safe environment, because our field is made of a rubber surface. So, that's so important. And also, I think the generous supports of county government, the municipalities, businesses, individuals, foundations, you name it, we're a grassroots program. We don't have deep pockets. We go out to the community to help support what we do, because we think what we're doing is very special. We're educating the community to make everyone understand what our kids are able to do if given an opportunity, rather than focus on what they can't do, and that's so important to us. And when you look at the player demographics, I think it's very telling that you can see by that pie chart that the majority of our players are coming from North Hampton County, and that's very important to us. And Warren County has many kids coming over from across the bridge. We have a couple from Lehigh County and some others from outside the region, Monroe County. So, when we go to municipalities and we ask them to support us, because we're bringing their kids, who typically have been on the sidelines, not having an opportunity to play sports, to our field, and they have come through and they've provided nice support for us. So, that's very important. And that's what you're paying for. You're paying for kids that are coming from multiple communities in the eight school districts that comprise the North Hampton County that have intellectual and physical disabilities to play a game of baseball. And you can see by the revenues and the expenses, the big chunk of what we get monies from is from direct public support. And it's very important that we go out and we continue to be able to sustain what we're doing each and every year for the costs and the expenses that we have to pay forward. So, the nice thing about what we've done is we have no debt. We are paid in full, and we are pleased that the community has been so supportive. And as I said to you as I began my statements, we can't thank you enough for what you have done to support us as a county council, not only up to this time, during this next program year, and hopefully in the future, that you will continue to provide the funding that's so necessary for these kids to continue to excel, to enjoy themselves, to have fun, to have their parents come out and enjoy and watching their kids be successful and doing something that they've never been able to do before. So, again, on behalf of the Board of Directors of our Miracle League of North Hampton County at Easton Rotary Field, we thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
And we thank you as well.
Rick, we should thank, just on behalf of your staff also. I know you and Bob work very, very hard to maintain things, but many of the council members have been there. I know I was with Matt and Matt. We both were at the field with the kids. The more important thing is to see the looks on the faces of the parents when they can enjoy that, because they don't get that very often in their lives, and I just wanted you to know that that's appreciated from all of us, okay?
Well, we appreciate those thoughts, and just as a sidebar, Matt is my nephew, as many of you know. Love you. Thank you for your support, as always, and thank you for serving the county of North Hampton these past few years. Did a great job.
Matt, you want to say something?
Actually, I was going to try to beat you to the compliments and just, you know, I've said it before, that you are my uncle, and there is a soft spot in my heart for the Miracle League. I remember probably over five years ago, I wasn't on council yet, Sunday morning, Uncle Rick called me up, "You want to go see the field being put down?", which was just amazing. Of course, I was in shorts and a t-shirt. We drove over there, and they were putting the field down. So, just to see how, you know, the vacant land over to Shrin Center has been, you know, was basically donated and just allowed to have this beautiful facility built. And it's just, I remember when I first met Uncle Rick, and my Aunt Kimmy were living on Ferry Street in Easton, I couldn't understand, you know, you go over there for a family function, and Uncle Rick would throw in a VCR tape at one of the Special Olympic events he was at, and I never understood that calling or passion, because I was younger. And it's so nice to see that his children, my cousins, have followed in his footsteps. My younger daughter, or, I'm sorry, my older daughter, Trinity, when she goes over to be an Easton Angel, she has that calling, she has that gift, and that's what it is. So, I think it's fantastic, and I thank everyone on council. I thank the administration, and I've talked to Mr. McClure, and hopefully, we can continue supporting the Miracle League, because I do think it's one of the hidden gems of North Hampton County, and I'm just very proud to be your nephew.
Thank you.
Love you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Then the next item is courtesy of the four. This time, I see Mr. Bruce Haynes. I'd like to invite him up. Mrs. Mauer, you can join him if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Bruce Haynes, Managing Partner at Bethlehem, and here tonight to explain to you what this great opportunity North Hampton County has to really make an impact in tourism for the Lehigh Valley. The most recent, a year ago, Charlene, at the work, really, of Charlene Donches Mowers, who's the Executive Director of Historic Bethlehem Museums and Sites, attained the designation of, putting Historic Bethlehem on the U.S. Tentative List for UNESCO World Heritage Designation. That is unbelievably huge with only, I'm not going to steal her thunder, because she'll talk about that, but what would be, there's only 25 sites right now in the U.S. There's a thousand World Heritage Sites, the Sphinx and the pyramids and the Great Wall of China, and to even be on the tentative list to be considered in that league is beyond anyone's wildest imagination, certainly mine. And the fact that there's only 25 in the U.S., and Independence Hall is the closest and the only one in Pennsylvania. So, the opportunity over the next ten years to make this happen is phenomenal, and that designation alone actually positioned Historic Bethlehem at a higher level of historic significance than Colonial Williamsburg. And so, with that, I'm going to let Charlene talk about what that means. The only difference between us and Colonial Williamsburg is we don't have the Rockefeller Foundation supporting and putting together something to go promote Historic Bethlehem like Colonial Williamsburg has done. So, with this, I'd just like to turn it over briefly to Charlene to talk about that this really has a possibility. It's a long shot, but we're in the hunt, and with some work and some help on your part, on a targeted marketing campaign nationally and internationally to make things happen and get our presence up there, I think we can really make something happen. And so, with that, I'll introduce Charlene.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Charlene Donches Mowers, and President of Historic Bethlehem Museums and Sites. Through our efforts, Historic Meravian Bethlehem was designated a National Historic Landmark District in 2012, and consists of 14.7 acres of the original Meravian settlement dating to 1741. It's one of eight such districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and one of about 200 in the United States. In December 2016, on the eve of the 275th anniversary of the founding of Bethlehem, Historic Meravian Bethlehem was named to the U.S. Tentative List along with other U.S. sites, and this list has now been accepted by the World Heritage Commission and appears on UNESCO World Heritage website. We are an incredible company. Some of the other sites on the 2016 list are Central Park, Brooklyn Bridge, Ellis Island, the Chicago Skyscraper Movement of the Early 20th Century, and Historic Meravian Bethlehem. Isn't that exciting? I'm just thrilled. So, each year, the United States can choose one site from this list to go through the World Heritage nomination process. The UNESCO World Heritage List was established in 1972 to encourage the identification, protection, and preservation of cultural and natural heritage around the world considered to be of outstanding value to humanity. As Bruce said, the Great Wall of China, pyramids at Giza in Egypt, Taj Mahal in India, Acropolis in Greece are examples on that site. There are 1,073 sites on the World Heritage List, and only 23 are in the United States. Now, we have the opportunity to join that illustrious group. We must be ready when called upon to prepare a dossier proving to the world that we are indeed worthy of this recognition, and we must demonstrate that we have outstanding universal value. That is World Heritage speak. That means that we have to be important to all of humanity, and we think that we are. So, once a site makes the World Heritage List, tourism regularly increases fourfold. Consider what that would do for tourism-related businesses in here in North Hampton County, for hotels, restaurants, shops, additional jobs that kind of development would create, and the additional income tax to improve and add infrastructure to our valley. Also, consider the incredible prestige locally, nationally, and internationally that would come with this kind of recognition. And also, being a World Heritage Site, having one here in the county would benefit businesses as well. It would help in making our community more attractive for our current and future employees, retaining and gaining talent that we need. So, we would appreciate your support in assisting with marketing efforts to help us gain this recognition. Thank you so very much for listening.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Charlene?
That was my next question, but any questions?
She ought to get a big round of, big applause.
I have a question, if I may.
Mr. President? Mr. Warren?
Mr. Haynes, one question if I can. This is about marketing, correct? This is about global marketing?
Global marketing.
So, can you kind of give us a little bit of bullet points on what you're going to do with that?
Exactly. And that's what I intended to do. Great. Thank you very much. Actually, yeah, so, we've been talking about this for some time, and I know I was talking to the current administration, and we've been working up this plan. We have been in contact with Miles Partnership. Miles is the premier national global travel company in the world. They've been around since 1954. They represent some significant communities currently, including Colonial Williamsburg, and they're a national marketing organization. And our target here is to profile the, it's a targeted marketing campaign, profiling the heritage traveler. So, we're not just out there looking at all travelers. This is a targeted campaign to go after the heritage traveler around the world. And this company is uniquely positioned to make that happen, starting from taking the Historic Bethlehem Museums and Sites website and building it into a true national, world-class quality website to put us up there and do all the SEOs and all the other stuff that you do, certainly in the digital world, to put us in the front of the heritage traveler as they're looking for places to go. So, ideally, for example, the goal would be if I'm a heritage traveler and I pull up Colonial Williamsburg, that actually Historic Bethlehem would come up in front of them before Colonial Williamsburg would. And Historic Bethlehem itself has, you know, has obviously done a terrific job of using resources of all its, you know, essentially all donor money, and she could talk to you about how much, I mean, you know, her budget is going out and begging, but it's significant. And they do a great job of local marketing and always have, do a great job with the kids in local schools, with the Blueberry Festival, the various festivals they have to get people engaged. They've always done a terrific job with that, and their budget allows them to do that, and they do well with that budget, but they've never had the Rockefeller money, if you will, to really get out there and truly make, I mean, we are more, truly more historically significant than Williamsburg, but the world doesn't know it. And so, if we're really going to get selected, down-selected, we got to increase our visibility. So, this program is really a twofold mission. The ultimate objective is to get out there so that people know what Historic Bethlehem is, but ultimately, it's to achieve the UNESCO World Heritage Designation. And in the process of doing this, and the $200,000 that we're requesting for this year to kick us off is, would allow us to really start that program and jump-start it, and this isn't, this isn't, the beauty of it is that as we get out there and get local, we're going to bring tourism in here right away, just by the fact that we're going to be promoting that we're on the U.S. Tentative List for UNESCO Designation. And so, I think this isn't just a dream, a dream that hopefully we get this. This is about bringing tourism here in 2018 and doubling our tourism in 2018, and getting in Preservation Magazine as a, as when you open it up to Historic Downtowns, you know, and making sure we're prominent in that, and getting in Travel and Leisure Magazine and getting on Travel and Leisure, their digital media. And ultimately, obviously, if we get UNESCO World Heritage, if any of you have traveled to Europe, you know, the biggest thing about that people advertise, the tourism companies, how many UNESCO sites are you going to see? So, if that happens, then we become part of the National Trust on the tours of the National Trust, bringing people here to Bethlehem and North Hampton County. So, we're after that heritage traveler. It's the most coveted leisure traveler market, and it's the largest, fastest-growing market. Again, we're targeting this, the heritage traveler. They're millennials to baby boomers. Millennials are really into heritage, believe it or not. I'm a baby boomer. You know I'm into heritage with a historic hotel. But these travelers make 25% more trips per year than the average leisure traveler. They are more educated, with higher household incomes. They spend 50% more per trip than the leisure traveler, and they want authentic experiences. Historic Bethlehem is the ultimate authentic experience, but we also have other authentic experiences. We have steel stacks across the river. We have the Industrial Museum that just opened a year ago, two years ago, and we have the Canal Museum here in Easton. So, the hook to get the heritage traveler here is this authentic, this authentic thing that we have. Once we get them here, we can expose them to all that there is to offer to that traveler when they get here. So, they're also dedicated shoppers at independent retail stores, not at chains. That's their thing. They want unique dining experiences, and they attend food and wine festivals, and they attend shows, like at the State Theater or at Zollner. So, it's our market, and they stay in local hotels, obviously, and hotels like ours that collect $250,000 a year in North Hampton County hotel taxes. So, just wanted to put that plug in there. So, we're a major contributor to this. We're asking for the funds back to engage Miles Partnership to get us out there, and also, we want to increase, it's all about marketing. Everything that we're going to spend this on is marketing, and that would include signage. We have, we actually have an architectural rendering of signage that we still haven't figured out where exactly it would go, but this is, you've seen the new sign that Meravian College has perhaps at the end of Main Street. This sort of mirrors that theme, the oval theme, and it identifies to somebody that you are at someplace special. Right now, we really don't have a sign. When people come off the Hill to Hill Bridge, they really don't know they're in someplace special, so we just want to, we want to make that available. So, that could be a $40,000 to $50,000 component of the 200 in this first year. So, again, you know, getting us, this really would help us get off the ground to a multi-year program, obviously, for us, but it's a great, it's a great thing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anymore? Mr. Dietz?
When did they make the designation? When is that?
Well, there is no defined date. Charlene can speak to that. Each year, they, one of the 11, there's 11 of us sitting out there as candidates, and there's going to be no more introduced until in the next 10 years.
The U.S. Tentative List is closed for 10 years.
Wow.
So, the sites that are on the list right now will stay on the list unless someone actually withdraws from the list. The United States may put forward one site per year, but even after 10 years, we will not be dropped. will not be dropped off the site and let the list. We can still qualify again. So it's not going to happen next year, but we are in the running with these other 12 cultural sites to be put forward by the United States, the Department of the Interior and the Department of the Department of State, to go forward to the World Heritage Commission in Paris.
There's a lot of administrative work that, that needs to be done to make this, and the city of Bethlehem is putting, Mayor of the city is putting in the budget for money for the administrative part, and then we're here for the marketing part, the designing tourism, from the hotel tax that we collect. So that's, that's, but there is one other thing else to give even more hope to this, that this isn't, is the fact that we have a unique situation because there is another Meridian community. I don't think you mentioned that.
Christiansfeld in Denmark, which is another 18th century Meridian community, had, was placed on the World Heritage List in 2015. So, uh, we will be riding on their coattails, you might say, uh, to be added to that and, um, using their terminology of outstanding universal value. So we do have, in essence, a leg up because of that.
And there's a little twist they're using there. They're calling, they're calling it a multi, multi...
Oh, it's, it's another UNESCO speak. It's a transboundary, transnational, transcontinental serial nomination to the World Heritage List.
You guys are lucky. So if inside's going after the heritage traveler, we're looking for a transnational design. We're excited about the opportunity.
I think we are too. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I sure feel a lot tonight better than I did.
Will you keep working on that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Um, next, under courtesy of the floor, um, I have Jeff Fox and Arjuna.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
I want to, uh, thank you all for your service in the past year on Northampton County Council. I will say, you know, I hearken back to the Miracle League Two, my days with the Special Olympics, a decade ago, but, um, and, uh, and this is something that Mr. Haynes was discussing, to get excited about, using an asset that we already have here in Northampton County to, to promote worldwide is something to get excited about. I, um, I want to speak this evening, uh, from my perspective, which is the only perspective I can give you is my own, um, as a resident and taxpayer of Northampton County. I want to, some random plots that I've had, um, regarding the ordinance and the hearing about, about the Da Vinci Science Center, I will point out something that I just discovered this evening, and I talked to Mr. Phillips about it, something in the ordinance that I noticed says, uh, ordinance number 359 of 2000, 440 of 2005, determining that Da Vinci Science Center, comma, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, comma, engage in blah, blah, blah. They are not in Northampton County. So that either, either, either has to be amended, changed, or brought up. So I bring that to your attention this evening. Well, I want you to think of...
Jeff, run that by me again. You mean in the ordinance, the hotel ordinance?
Well, of the amended agenda, under Old Business Number Three, public hearing on the ordinance titled, and ordinance of, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. A few lines down says, one, two, three, four, six lines down, ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that Da Vinci Science Center, comma, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, comma, they are not in Northampton County. Matter of fact, I've done, uh, homework today, and I pulled up their IRS information, et cetera, and their address is listed as Allentown 18103, which is in Lehigh County. They are not in Northampton County, so the ordinance is incorrect. So as it is, the ordinance would not be valid, I guess. Da Vinci Science Center, uh, as I was reading through today, is, is indeed a nonprofit organization, which is another way of saying it's tax-exempt, um, in the same way that Lehigh Valley Health Network and St. Luke's University Health Network are tax-exempt nonprofit organizations. Those institutions are under closer scrutiny as mergers and expansion eat up land and tax revenue. This is what Da Vinci wants to do with the proposed Easton project. The property would be removed from the tax rolls, unless, of course, Da Vinci gives up its nonprofit or tax-exempt status. The other thing I want to point out is that Mrs. Erickson was not forthcoming regarding the Ripley's Aquarium Project in Monroe County. She obviously knew about it, as I was reading and researching today, and chose not to disclose this information. What else is she not being forthcoming about? Whose best interest is Mrs. Erickson concerned with? Da Vinci, obviously, her employer. She is good at what she does. She is so good, in fact, that Da Vinci welcomed her back with open arms, as in her second stint as CEO. I want to bring your attention to, off of their website...
Jeff, about amended or so?
The greater possibilities, uh, which is the strategic plan for 2016, 2019, which says, "At the same time, critical analysis indicates that the center must increase its physical capacity dramatically in order to accumulate its fulfilled, to actualize its fulfilled potential. In exploring greater possibilities for its future, the Da Vinci Science Center seeks to take strategic actions necessary to position itself for a bold expansion that will enable it to present, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." My point is, there's nothing wrong with that, but Da Vinci wants to use Northampton County tax money, wants to use Northampton County for its own purposes. My point is, there's enough to fund in needs that already exist, and as I was looking through the articles that exist regarding, I read a lot of things such as "posed hope" would then be, if, projected, plans, all future things. We have assets here in Northampton County that need to be funded, promoted...
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Fox.
But, uh, very early in the proposed project, we have no rush. Da Vinci's in line. We should...
Thank you. Uh, next they have is David O'Connell, 113 Parker Avenue, Easton.
I'm sorry, please.
Okay. All right, well, then that was all I had under courtesy of the floor. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address council? Mayor Panto?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for indulging us again. Uh, it's that important that I believe that we should take the time anyway, but as you know, I'm Sal Panto. I'm the mayor of the city of Easton, honored to be serving the public like all of you, and I wish all of you who are leaving good luck. Uh, I personally believe you all did a really fine job. Um, I'd like to thank council for listening last evening to the discussion. Unfortunately, I had to leave for a, um, a seminar up with the NAACP and Lafayette College on growing up black in, in Easton, so it was a very good session, and I apologize for having to leave. Where one of our restaurant owners about his concern for the 250-seat restaurant in Science City. That component has been removed completely. Um, we find, and we met with the owners, many of the restaurant owners, this, just this afternoon. I, I find the Da Vinci Science Center Board to be, and staff, be very, very acceptable to making sure that this is a community asset, that it doesn't detract from the, the town, but, but puts into it. And that's been our goal ever since we started this project. Our goal has always been to make this project a catalyst to grow our economy, both in Easton and in, in Northampton County. Removing the restaurant is not really a large financial loss to the plan because it was a lease anyway. It was about $100,000 out of an $18 million budget, so it's not something that's going to impede the financial stability. Like the movie theater was looked upon as being an attraction for the evening, for bringing people back to the center, that's the way the rest, aquarium destination restaurant was looked at. And now, uh, we're, we're looking at a number of things. Uh, as I said to this board many times, to me, the most, as an educator, the most important part of this program was the Science Center. And I believe we've enhanced that, and other people will speak to that under the public hearing. I'd also like to address the concerns raised over the planning and research that has been done to date. And what I brought with me, all of the different things that go back to December 2015. Um, the press and the media sometimes, and, and people who are just not available to all the facts, they don't realize that these, all these studies have been done, including program plans, site plans, facilities plans, funding plans, marketing plans, business plans. Um, I believe I've shown that our administration has been proven that we are about the numbers. We didn't enter into this agreement blindly either, nor would you. We are financially successful, and by some people, they call it a miracle. We haven't raised real estate taxes since I took office. We haven't raised fees in over nine years. We've ended up with a surplus every year, and we've raised our bond rating from a triple B to an A+, and still maintain that to this date. We just had a bond rating again just within the last six months. So these studies are important to me as well as to you. It's important that we know what the numbers are. As a matter of fact, we've even contracted after the first of the year, once we get the final plans in December, uh, from the architects, et cetera, who was EJDD, which is one of the world-renowned Science Center architects, uh, and I have some new ones for you to, to look at. Um, there, we will then entertain a feasibility, or not a feasibility, I shouldn't use that word because that's the wrong word to use here, marketing campaign. We want to validate these. Before I enter into a $30 million agreement, we want to validate these. These say that they're going to have 600,000 people a year. Well, I, that's fine, and I'm sure their consultants and their people who've done these surveys are, are truthful and honest, but if I'm going to invest money, we need to make sure that those numbers are the same. So we, we are doing our due diligence, and I just wanted to maintain that these studies were important, and are also important about the downtown restaurants. Our downtown restaurants have become our reason for people coming to our place at night. The State Theater brings them downtown maybe 80 times a year. The restaurants bring them down almost every night anymore. Um, large corporations in the township are bringing their outside salespeople down to eat during the week, so we see business all at night. What we don't have yet is we need to grow the daytime economy. This would help do that. And the, the restaurant owners that we met with today were concerned about a restaurant destination taking away from their seats that they already have to fill. They're, they're, you know, you talk about how many tops you serve in, in a restaurant. So for the city of Easton and Northampton County, I believe this project is transformative. I believe that bringing in over 600,000 new residents to the, to, to visitors to Easton and surrounding area will annually spend more money in our restaurants and retail shops, and we want to make sure that that does this. Um, there's a lot of talk about Kraila doesn't bring any money to downtown. Well, except for the three months during the year, that's pretty much true. The rest of the time is usually group school children come in by bus and leave by bus. They're certainly not going to allow their, their fifth and sixth graders to walk around during the day just shopping and eating. But during the summer months, we do see that. And what we're hoping that this does is, is a catalyst to bring people into Mr. Haynes, or the other, Mr. Haynes Restaurant, uh, Hotel. Why not? Um, we need to be cross-marketing what we have in Bethlehem and Easton. We are the two historic sites in the Lehigh Valley, and we need to promote that. And we are already, and, and I'm sure Lynn will talk about the collaboration that's already going on with other groups throughout, like the Signal Museum, which is the home of the, you know, Northampton County Historical Society. Wonderful facility, by the way. If you haven't been there, you really should see it. So there's all reasons why we've always went after a second attraction. And I know I take the heat about the High School Hall of Fame, and it failed. Well, it never failed. It didn't start. It's not even built yet anywhere. So we may even get it back. Mr. Ferraro still has his offices in Easton. Mr. Ferraro still is the head of the High School Coaches Association, has over 6,000 coaches that are members of that association. He has not moved forward on that.
No relation.
No relation. That's right, no relation. Sorry, Ben.
Don't complain.
So, you know, I just heard Charles Barkley say this. I was at a conference, and he said, "If you can't dream it, you'll never achieve it." It's been my motto for a long time. I know that some of our things are pie in the sky, but if we don't have pie in the sky, we're not going to get our cake with our icing. Okay? You need to be able to look forward. When I make decisions in the city, like you do, it doesn't impact just today. It impacts the next 30 years. So I look, like, right now, we're looking at, do we really need to build more parking structures? How many do we need? One or two? Talking autonomous cars are here, they're a reality. Well, we need parking structures in 25 years, and you're going to have a 20-year bondage on it. So we're looking at things like that. We're not, we're not just taking these things like... So I will say that, I, I know I wasn't going to bring this up, and I told the Da Vinci people that I wouldn't. I heard Mr. Fox say about Ripley's. That still isn't even thought of. You show me one document that says they're definitely, or they're not, they're even thinking of coming to the Poconos. There's a lot of talk about it. We are much further ahead than theirs. But I'm sure Lynn will make some announcements about that as well during her presentation, but I just want to say that, yes, we don't want to be competitive. We want to be collaborative, but we don't want to be competitive. So we're always looking at that. You, you know, I have, the restaurants are even looking at what other restaurants are still coming into Easton. What is a hotel going to do? Is it going to, is it going to have a nice restaurant as well? Are we going to compete? You know, I had a grocery store on College Hill, and I wasn't real happy when Wawa opened up. It was more competition, but I expected it. We, we adapted to it. I mean, Wawa's a, basically a regional brand. They have a lot of marketing dollars. I don't. They got that nice bird and everything, you know? So what I probably like to say is this project, it's happening. It's not a, it's not a pie in the sky. It's happening. On January 4th, we will buy the Days Inn, I did call it Days Inn, I didn't call it Days Out, like I used to call it the Unquality Inn. The Days Inn property is going to be built, purchased on January 4th, the money's already in place, and bids are already being received this month to start for its demolition. I do not want it to become blighted and broken windows and everything else. We will have the space, and in the interim between this, is even built in 2022 for opening day, or 2020 when it starts being built, we will use it for the much-needed surface parking lot that will have 350 cars in downtown Easton. So we'll have more parking for the people who are coming, and we don't have to build that parking structure right away, like we were going to. We can wait three years. Now, these numbers are small compared to what you deal with, but we pay down our debt, debt, about $2.5 million a year. So in three years...
That's a lot of money for us, too.
Okay. So in three years, we'll have paid down about $7.5 to $8 million of debt. So the bond market, as you know, likes to see you decrease your debt before you go out for more money. So this gives us the time to do that. So in closing, I would just like to say that we hope that the county will be our major partner. We need a partner, and we want you to be our partner. Because the only thing I can, and tell you is that with the government's support, we will have a much better chance of raising the yeoman's share of the dollars in the private sector. The corporations that we've met with already, they always ask the question, "Well, what are you going to do for this?" And I, and I could say, "Oh, I'm doing this, and the county's doing that, the state's doing that." They like to hear that there's cooperation between the various entities. So we are not done designing this, but I'm going to give it to you now because I think it's coming out really cool. I think the, again, I'm the science guy. I, I think the science portion of this is, is much more lucrative than anything else, including the fish. Um, I think what this shows you is that the, the, the Da Vinci man becomes the Science and Me Center. As you walk through the man, or the woman, I don't know what it's going to be, but Da Vinci was, had to, you know, the man, through the head, through the brain, through the lungs, the kidneys, the heart, and actually experience what goes on in our bodies and how that works and how it functions. For a young person to be able to do that, I mean, I still remember going through the brain at Franklin Institute. I was probably 10 years old at the time. So thank you very much. I will, um, just hand these out for you. I don't have to say, "May I approach?" Because it's not a court of law, but...
You may approach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She is a lady before.
It's just been pointed out to me that there is a Wawa somewhere close to this that's not noted on the plans.
My name is Kevin Brown. I'm also...
Are you here for the Da Vinci?
I'm speaking on behalf of my council members and the City of Easton also.
We do have a public hearing on the ordinance specifically. Did, did you want to do it now? Yeah, why don't we, if you're, yeah, when we get to the ordinance, we do have a public hearing, you can address it right at that time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, why don't we wait until the, the public hearing? Because I, the mayor was here yesterday and didn't get a chance to speak. That's why I wanted to get him in early. Is there anyone else to address council, not related to any of the pending ordinances, whether it's Da Vinci, or the budget, or the military? No? Okay. So then, let's move into the agenda then. We've got the Controller's Report. No, Mr. Barron is not here. So then, the County Executive's Report, Mr. Brown?
Hi, good evening, council. I just wanted to take a few minutes to follow up on several of the items from the budget that we discussed at last night's meeting. First of all, just some comments that were shared. While I appreciate that council has been speaking to the incoming administration, which is appropriate, I would like to point out that I am still the sitting executive at this time, and the budget before you is this administration's recommendations. I assure you that when I was sworn into office in 2014, I inherited a budget from Mr. Stover and had no input into the financial components of that particular budget at that time. So I would just ask council to make sure you keep that in mind as you go through the evening and take a look at, consider this administration's request. Second of all, I'd like to just, four years ago, I ran on a platform of good government. Specifically, there were several things I had put out there. To operate the county's government in a cost-effective way, ensure efficient delivery of services, both internally and externally, keep tax rates as low as possible while sacrificing core operations, grow our economy and strengthen our communities. Four years later, I can honestly say that not only did we meet these objectives, we surpassed all expectations in, in every way. Just a few highlights. We've been able to eliminate in the 2018 budget, all deficit spending, and actually in the budgets over the last several years. By the time we roll up 2017, we will have cut or eliminated between $60 and $70 million in waste that was in the budget when I came in four years ago. For Gracel, we've eliminated over $30 million of taxpayer-funded losses at the nursing home, something that no one would have thought we'd been able to do. We've been able to reduce our healthcare cost and internal operating costs by tens of millions of dollars. Workers' compensation, which I reported, we've eliminated over $4 million in that benefit. We've tripled the county reserves, and this administration has never requested a tax increase in order to balance any of the particular budgets. The 2018 budget, when I came in, in 2014, there was over $17.5 million required from the general fund to balance that particular budget. In 2018, I said that it was $0. It's the first time that we can tell in the history of the county that there have been no dollars required to balance a particular budget. In each of the budgets subsequently, when there were dollars from the general fund, we eliminated and returned all those dollars back to the general fund. And I share that with you because we've been very aggressive, and the management, myself, very hands-on, the team that I have, from Kathy Allen to Jim Hunter, to Rand Heyman, and others, have been very effective at making sure that these controls were put in place and followed through on the, on the strategy that we had implemented overall. Because of the improvements we've been able to make in our liabilities and so and so off, we, so forth, we've actually been able to reduce our insurance premiums by 39% over the last four years on that. We've continued to make 100% of the recommended contributions to the employee pension fund, which today, I don't have the exact figure, but it's well, it's over 90% funded on a $402 million balance as we, as we speak today. The, in the private sector, you know, jobs have increased 7.5% over the last several years. I mentioned Gracel, just some real highlights, since this is really a very key accomplishment of the administration. In 2016, Gracel earned a profit for the first time in eight years. The trend is something we projected 2017, and 2017 to continue, that will hold, and we do expect it to continue through 2018. It achieved a four-star rating for the first time in the history of the facility, and achieved and maintained that for at least two years. Two years in a row, we received zero deficiencies in the Department of Health, just to receive zero at any time is something with two years in a row. We ensured over 800 employees were able to retain their jobs, and we've upgraded the quality and the performance of that facility. This, most of the council that's sitting here today ran on infrastructure and capital projects. I think this administration's done an excellent job in making sure not only did we fund the projects, but we delivered the projects on time and at or under budget overall. The highlight for this administration has been the public-private partnership, which this council helped with in getting 33 of our 119 county bridges out for replacement or repair. We've done it as an innovative way for the first time in the history of the state that a county would use a public-private partnership in order to do that. Overall, we anticipate that'll save taxpayers over $17 million by the time the project's done, and it'll generate over 1,000 jobs in the process, taking care of our infrastructure. For law enforcement, the central booking, which we've talked about, which was taking anywhere from two to three hours of an officer's time to process an inmate, we have it down to 15 minutes or less. It's a true drop and go, returning thousands of man-hours back to our communities, keeping them safe. The topic of farmland preservation has been something that has been tracked through the four years. As of today, this administration has preserved 100% of the farms that are qualified. The funding that has been put in every budget is more than sufficient to meet that demand moving forward. And with partnership with the courts, there has been created a post-conviction drug court and a mental health court with that. And I share that with you because this is a, has been a very aggressive management under my stewardship and with my team moving forward. So I have some challenges with some of the recommendations that council has put as amendments into the budget. First of all, I'll start with the proposed 4.5% salary increase. The county administration had put in a 2% COLA for all nine union employees. This year, we had done the same last year. The 4.5% basically exceeds what the current union contracts in their final years, I believe most of them are at 2%. The contracts, there are 11 unions, that compromise, Mr. Kuzsky said, over 75% of our workforce. The message and the signal that you're sending to the unions as they begin renegotiating contracts is, hey, we get to start at 4.5%, and we get to go up from there. Those contracts tend to be annual improvements in salaries of these employees, and what you're really doing is messaging that if that were to go through, and the units follow through, that 4.5% turns out to be tens of millions of taxpayer dollars that in the next two, three, four years, that the taxpayers are able to fork over in order to support those kinds of salary demands. The next item would be the positions. We had asked, we have defunded several positions when I came into office. The council was recommending actually refunding and putting dollars back into some of these positions. To highlight, the warden's position, which was defunded. There is a director of corrections, and there is a warden. Basically, the DOC position was created in a, an attempt to, as political patronage. It was done to remove somebody, I believe, asked someone to step off council and take a job, but it's a redundant position. You do not need both positions, and I believe Dan Keane has demonstrated clearly that one of those two positions is all that's necessary. The DOC is an appointed position, the warden position is a career service position overall. The director of court services, another one of those we, I believe, refer internally as a hall walker. Their direct responsibility is supposed to be over the raw offices, but I think we've clearly demonstrated under the leadership of Kathy Allen as director of administration, that that, and in partnership with the courts, that that, those offices can be overseen and supervised and supported without the re-establishment of that, that position and the exempt position, which I believe was somewhere around $155,000 between the two positions, to re, re, put dollars back into those positions. I understand, looking forward, but I believe that should be left to the next council and the next administration. If they want to take that up, they have opportunities and vehicles in order to put those positions in place, the same as this administration has had to do that. Farmland preservation, again, I believe you received a letter from a very vocal person of this administration regarding that, and I take umbrage to the tone, and the comments are in that particular letter. And I share with you again, 100% of the farms, even as we're here tonight, and have been preserved, that qualify under the particular program at the current funding. So the recommendations that council is putting forth to put additional funding in there, I don't believe is required or necessary at all. As a matter of fact, lower Mount, I think it was Upper Mount Bethel Township actually voted to cut back their EIT tax because they're sitting on a $2 or $3 million surplus in their open space funding, as, as I recall. There was a comment made, I believe, regarding the funding for central booking at Lehigh Township. That was an issue that Mr. Dietz and Mr. Phillips in particular had brought that group in. The funding, based on actually council's recommendation, has been put in the budget. Envoyses were paid in July, and that included the, I believe, a payment for 2018, so those funds are there. Unfortunately, because of the political nature of what ensued, and unfortunately, I do believe, as Mr. O'Hare had warned, that it could potentially hurt my reelection, obviously I was not re-elected. The unfortunate part is I had been working with that township and several local municipalities to actually be able to use the P3 model to bring infrastructure money to help them with their, pave their roads, and replace local bridges that are not county-owned but are owned by local municipalities. So unfortunately, for $3,000 gain, millions of dollars of benefit have been lost due to some of the politics that have taken place. A couple more important, serious matters, I would like to address the stabilization fund. This was actually a recommendation and creation that was initiated by Mr. Hayden Phillips regarding the finances of Northampton County. When I came into office, we had $11.1 million in the general fund. That was the available amount. The recommendation had been to have at least two months, which 11 million is approximately one month of cash available to pay the county's bills going forward. Against my recommendation, Mr. Phillips introduced the tax increase, which council supported, with the caveat that it would be designated for a stabilization fund. Within that fund, a range of dollars was recommended to, to put that in there, but the sole intent of the tax increase was to fund the stabilization fund. This administration has honored that request from council and have continued to put dollars into that fund to where we have approximately 13.5 million today. The administration is asking, and have put into the budget amendment, the 2017 budget amendment, to bring that up to 20 million, I think, $400,000, which would take it to the, the upper end. As my recommendation, that council followed through with that, with the administration's recommendation. As I said, the sole intent of the tax increase was to fund the stabilization fund. I believe a comment was shared that, well, we will do partial of that, the county's doing well financially, and therefore, we can continue to incrementally contribute to that. But I want to remind you that the stabilization fund was created when there was only $11 million in the, in the general fund. In the years prior, at one point, the council had $70 million general fund balance, which in the ensuing years, with the prior administration and councils, were spending on average deficit spending $15.7 million, which eventually drew down that fund balance, which left this incoming administration with 11 million. So the $20 million is not for next year or the year after, but at some point in the future, when and if the county finds itself in that kind of dire straits, that there is an emergency fund of $20 million there for the, to be drawn upon to protect the taxpayers of this county. We did mention and talked about the implications of the state budget. I want to remind council that this administration was able to, to fund $24 million from our general fund because of the health and the finances that this administration was able to put in place. So we did not run into an issue where we were not able to support programs like children and youth and drug and alcohol and the human services, where we were not getting monies from the state in order to do that. There are other potential catastrophic events that could occur that are beyond our scope. If something were to happen in, in the month of February, before we're able to receive and collect our tax revenues for the following year, typically, we're at our lowest point of cash. This is what I believe the original intent of the stabilization fund was, and I'm calling on those original council members that voted for this to honor your original intent. And I'll remind my Democratic friends on council that they petitioned heavily that I actually vetoed that particular tax increase, which I did not. I, and I supported the recommendation from council at that time. So I would actually ask all of you to support the stabilization fund to the full amount, at least to the, to the point that the, this administration is recommending. As a caveat to that, and a corollary to that, then comes to the tax millage, which council is taking up today. By fulfilling your obligation to meet the stabilization requirements, the need for that tax increase no longer exists. And I'm requesting that someone on council, or council itself, actually take up and amend, put through a recommendation that the tax millage be rolled back from the current 11.8 to the then-existing, when I came in office, 10.8 mills, which is one mill of tax, which is what was increased at the end of going into the 2015 budget cycle three years ago. The need for that particular millage was, is not necessary at this point, especially if the stabilization fund and the dollars committed there go in place. So I'm requesting that council take that up. When we prepared the budget, we prepared, we delivered the budget through, early October. At the time, we did not have enough of a cash forecast, understand where we would end up, and see if we'd be able to make that recommendation. But at this time, after another two months have lapsed, we're very comfortable with the fact that you do not need to continue that tax increase, especially with the financial health that the council, that the, this administration is leaving the county in moving forward. The final item I would like to address with you that came up is in the capital projects, and that's the new jail fund balance. It's approximately $1.19 or $1.2 million that have been set aside. It's my recommendation that at a minimum, you leave that fund balance in place. There are some comments, again, talking about the incoming administration, very vocal about no jail ever, not necessary overall. However, this administration had, my administration, we put through a priority on the capital projects, getting the financial stabilization in place, and then we addressed the major capital projects, including bridges. The jail is the next and most important, I think, capital project the, the next administration is going to have to address. While a comment was shared that there's a transition administration, and the incoming administration's not favorable to it, I don't believe that this council should hide behind the transit, the transition of administrations and yoke your, and avoid your commitment to the public. There have been three, I believe, three independent engineering reports over the last 20 years that have all reconfirmed over and over the fact that this jail is obsolete, it is falling down around our ears. And to not be proactive, at least as a council, you have no control over what an administration can do, at least not directly, but it is your obligation to the public that you make the effort to, under all possible ways, to make sure that a jail project moves forward in the next year or two. To put a fine point on that, there was a recent engineering report that was done. Kathy, can you hand them out? This was done by Dewey and... This was done by Dewey Engineering in October. This is the latest repairs that we need to do, based on this engineering report that's currently an RFP out on the street in order to solicit the bids to do these repairs. Most of this, you'll see, if you leaf through it, these are just various pictures of the BHU and RHU cells. Approximately, there's, I believe, there are six cells, upper six cells, lower, that are affected. And in short, if you go to page 22, second paragraph, that will actually give you the descriptor of the challenges that the jail is currently undergoing. We are receiving bids for the repairs. But essentially, the short of it is, these cells are collapsing, and the upper cells and the lower cells are linked, and if one should collapse, you're actually pulling down over 12 potential cells in the block. The greater challenge and the greater liability here is not about the cost. I know there were some with the DLR report that was issued and the $185 million price tag that was an initial, an initial cost on that particular project caused some consternation, if you wouldn't concern. However, the liability that this county currently experiences, having had three engineering reports, full conversation amongst this body acknowledging those reports, confirming what those reports have said, and then to, again, bury, put your head in the sand and ignore the need to move forward with the new jail project as rapidly as possible, I think is really irresponsible on the part of the county, and you're really exposing the taxpayers to a huge, huge liability. And God forbid, something happens as a result of a piece of concrete or a piece of steel failing, injuring one of our employees, one of our inmates, or a visitor to the jail. It's something that we can no longer, no longer ignore. And I'm sure that if nothing is done, at some point in the near future, there is likely to be lawsuit or lawsuits filed, whether it be from the inmates themselves, ACLU, inspectors, a number of different entities that would have concern of the state of the jail. I put that out to you, and I asked that you leave at least the 1.2 million as starting seed money. The estimates for actually doing an engine, full-blown engineering potential for that would range anywhere from $6 to $10 million in the actual cost of the project, depending on how broad, is quite extensive. So it's not something that I think we as an elected body can continue to ignore. And now, if you choose to ignore it, basically, as the saying goes, now you own it, if you would. You're assuming responsibility for it, anything that would then happen thereafter is problematic then moving forward. So I thank you for the time. I apologize for the extended report, but I thought it was important to bring to, into focus and refocus what's been going on over the last four years. And again, the stabilization fund, we are able to, the improvements in the management, financial management of this county have been a result of my leadership and the active leadership of the team that we have in place with that, and you can't assume that that kind of management is going to remain. So the future financial performance of this county is, you're going to have to wait and see what that looks like, and I would not gamble necessarily with the finances. Protect them if you can. At least the stabilization fund is a way to protect the taxpayers from an immediate cause moving forward. So I thank you, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move then into old business. First item is a public hearing on the 2017 budget amendment ordinance. This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Bennell and Mr. Kraft at the November 16 meeting, and the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at this meeting. At this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the 2017 budget amendment ordinance? So there's no one from the public. Comments from council? Well, I'll start. We had an extensive discussion yesterday regarding this, and Mrs. Ferraro made a motion to reduce the amount from 20 million 400 to 17 million.
Yes, for stabilization.
Okay. Would you like to make that amendment again?
Financial stabilization from 20 million 500,000 to 17 million.
Okay. I will second that for discussion. So we have a motion and a second. On the motion to amend the budget amendment to revise the financial stabilization down to 17 million, Mr. Geisinger, you got a comment?
I do, as I did yesterday, Mr. President, thank you. I made it very clear that I thought the reduction to 17 million was irresponsible, given the financial health of the county, the needs that it will face in the future, the situations that the state has put us in in the past, adding that to the comments that were just given to us by the executive. I was one of the individuals who co-sponsored the tax increase three years ago, with the understanding that this fund was the primary objective for that money. That's where this was supposed to go. And if we take $7.8 million a year, we should be at 22.4. We're at 24, 20 million 400,000. And I consider that an outstanding example of what can happen when people get together and say, "We're going to do the right thing. We're going to build a fund. We're going to protect the finances. We're going to make sure," as the mayor talked about, "now, if we need to go to the bond market, it's there. We've got stability. We did what we said we would do." And I really cannot implore my colleagues enough to vote to keep it at 20 million 400,000 because that is what we said we would do. We have done it, and if we walk away from that tonight, I feel we have done an injustice to the citizens of the county.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I was, I co-sponsored the GASP 54 ordinance, and Glenn has a persuasive argument.
Yes.
Very persuasive. I came in here inclined to go for, to have it at the 17. I'm now inclined, after your discussion, Glenn, and Mr. Brown, to go with the, to go with the number presented by the administration.
Mr. Bennell? I think for years, we, well, for the last four years that I've been here, we've been hearing about the farmland preservation. I think it was a matter of discussion Mr. Phillips had from the day one. You know, was the tax increase met for farmland preservation, was it not? In light of, you know, Mr. Geisinger and I have had the conversations, and I know we all took political hits on it in our first year in office when we announced we were going to raise the taxes. And that was for the stabilization fund. And I think not funding it fully with that 1%, it just opens future councils up to that open space argument. You know, we increased taxes by 1%. We said it was going to be for the stabilization fund. Anything short of that now almost becomes a lie. So I guess my intention would be, if that increase is not going to be used for stabilization 100%, then we should maybe just remove it entirely and then cut the tax rate back by a mill.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, that's the same logic that I'm following. I mean, we all came into that decision with the premise that we were going to build the stabilization fund up to 20 million, and then at that point, we were going to roll that tax back. That was what we all came in with the direct and complete understanding of, and so that's why I'll be voting in favor of increasing this to 20 million and then possibly rolling that tax back.
Anyone else? Okay. Again, I wasn't here four years ago when that vote took place, and it's my thought that, I don't believe that a fund balance this size is necessary and will agree to disagree. So we have a motion and a second to cut this to 17 million. Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
No.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
That's back to 20.
Now, on the ordinance as amended, any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote? Hold on. Wait a second.
Mr. President, I had a sidebar that totally took my brain out of the way you just said. Can you repeat?
The, what we are voting on now is the ordinance as amended. So we've amended the 2017 budget amendment ordinance to reduce the financial stabilization number to 17 million.
I got it. Thanks, man.
Okay. Clarification?
One point of clarification before the vote, President, if this fails, then what is the result?
Then the budget amendment would not be adopted as amended. Okay.
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
So the ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the 2018 millage rate. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Kraft and Mr. Bennell at the November 16 meeting. Public hearing debate and possible vote are scheduled for later this evening during the budget process. I'll quickly read that. It is hereby ordained and enacted that the millage rate for real estate tax purposes for the year 2018 shall be set at 11.8 mills on every dollar of assessed valuation of taxable real estate for $1.18 of every $100 of assessed valuation. Okay? And at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the millage rate? Any comments from council then? Mr. Phillips?
It's a rare occasion that we have the current executive and the incoming executive both think that the tax rate for 2018 is too high. Mr. McClure thinks we shouldn't raise it. Mr. Brown is saying we should lower it. I would make a proposal that we reduce this and roll it back to 10.8.
Okay, well, we're not voting on it yet till later, but at this point, we're having the public hearing, so you can make that amendment motion.
Yeah, I'm just telling you right now what my thought process is.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Then the next item is the public hearing on an ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Pursuant to the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Tourist Promotion Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania" and ordinance numbers 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, determining that DaVinci Science Center, a not-for-profit corporation within Northampton County, engage in tourism-related activities that benefit Northampton County and therefore directing a portion of the Northampton County annual allocation of the 12.5% of the revenue generated by the Hotel Room Rental Tax Act of, and Northampton County ordinance is 359 of 2000 and 440 of 2005, to be distributed to the DaVinci Science Center for the DaVinci Science City Project located in Easton, Pennsylvania in accordance with this ordinance. The ordinance was introduced by Mr. Kraft and myself at the November 16 meeting. Public hearing debate and possible vote are scheduled for this meeting. Okay, so at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing with regards to the DaVinci ordinance. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the ordinance at this time? I believe we had the city councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to speak on this behalf of the city of Easton and the DaVinci Center. First, let me say-
Could you just state your name and for the record?
Ken Brown, Eastern City Council. I was once told in my life that in order to have progress, you have to have a past to go to the future. Well, here we are. In 2003, when I first came on Eastern City Council, we had a very blighted and unruly looking city. Since then, we worked very hard with the public, council, and even the county council to make our city a bright star in Fort Northampton County and the Lehigh Valley. The DaVinci Center brings that star to another level. This DaVinci Center, I believe, is a plus-plus for everyone. Why is it a plus-plus? The county sits in the west ward of our city, which is low to moderate. This DaVinci Center will bring jobs to those who are at a low to moderate, in order for them to live a better lifestyle than what they have already. Not to say that they're not working hard, but they can be working smarter too. I believe that the DaVinci Center is going to be one of the forefronts of visitation in the Lehigh Valley. Why? We sit in a very peculiar situation, where we have 78, 22, 309, 611, 33. There's nowhere else in the Lehigh Valley that has what Eastern has in order to bring that visitation to our city. I believe that if we go forward with this and the county agrees with us in the partnership, it's a win for the county and a win for the city of Eastern. The city of Eastern has tried in various capacities to make this city a shining star, but we need to go a little further. That's where the DaVinci Center brightens our. I believe that through the history of the Lehigh Valley, Delaware River, the Lehigh River, a lot of people don't know what's in that river. They know it's sad there, but they don't know the history. The DaVinci Center brings that together. It allows the public to understand the history behind them two rivers, not just because it floods, but because it has a capacity of growth within our city. Eastern's unique. The Declaration of Independence was read right here in our center square. As you know, that was where county council was at one point. So I'm saying this evening that as you look at the DaVinci Center and looking at the hotel taxes that will bring that revenue stream that we're trying to move forward with this project, I'd ask that you really think about this. For many, many years, Eastern has been on the bottom pole of the Lehigh Valley, not thought of. But now, we're on the top of the pole, and we're encouraging everyone to come to our city. It's not just about Eastern, and as the mayor always said, this is a safe and clean city. And as I like to say in ending, we are one city, one community, but more so than that, we're at Northampton County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of council. For you that may not remember or aren't here, I guess you are here. My name is Jonathan Davis. I'm the owner of Pearlie Baker's Ale House, the Bank Street Annex, and Muller's General Store, all located in Northampton County. Since last night, my head has been a-swim.
[laughing] Mine's too.
I have been, you know, swamped. I'm emotional about this because it's been overwhelming, the support that has been brought out to me through various social media, phone calls, texts, and people stopping by my restaurant. And when I think about that, I have to thank you, because last night, you sent a very powerful message. And that message is that you care about downtown Eastern. And that's a message that needs to be heard. Somebody else listened to. That was the mayor, and that was DaVinci. And interestingly, we all managed to get together today, thankfully, thanks to the mayor facilitating things. It was quite a surprise to me, but he yielded some very powerful, strong, positive results. That being that we have a commitment from DaVinci to strip down the food surface aspects of their center to a minimal commissary kitchen and some grab-and-go things. This is a huge, huge positive step for the project. This is a huge, huge positive step for the project. I think that a lot of words have been spread about the Da Vinci and the jobs and restaurants making out. I do not want to forget what the restaurants actually represent. Over the years, in twenty-five years after I graduated Lafayette, I've been in Easton, literally right after I graduated. I've had over two thousand employees, mostly from the west ward, mostly low-income, a lot of children, a lot of children without structure. Fortunately, I came from a family with a lot of structure. I've been able to impress upon them certain values that I'm not sure they'd ever get. I've been able to provide them with some income, some more than others, but income. And this is the essence of what needs to be accomplished here. Now that Da Vinci's changed their ingredients, restaurant term, I think this is a powerful, powerful transitioning project, one that actually will not only benefit the restaurants, but the greater economy, much needed. Because as good as things are, and if you listen to the others, everything's well and good, but I promise you, they're not that good. Four buildings down from Pearlie Baker's, there's a blighted vacant building that's been blighted since the fire of two thousand and one, two thousand and two. You go up the streets, there's plenty of blighted buildings. My partner and I have bought them, fixed them up, done things with them, but there's plenty there for everybody. We're not there yet. The west ward's not there yet. This project can get us a heck of a lot closer than without it. So, I passionately urge you to consider supporting Da Vinci tonight, not for me, not for the restaurateurs, but for the community at large. It's imperative to take this opportunity, seize it, and move downtown in the west ward and eastern, greater eastern area further ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, Mr. Davis, if I may. I hope the mayor paid for lunch.
And thank you.
He didn't even get lunch.
I know.
You know what? I have a pretty busy day in general, you know? You add this to the mix, I was kind of blown away.
I have to commend you for spending the time that you did with us last night. It sparked a lot of, let me, let me finish, Peggy. I'm gonna talk about Nazareth anyway. I just wanted to tell you that it was, it was nice to hear you speak about, and the way you spoke, and it came from the heart, it didn't come from a piece of paper. It meant a lot to a lot of people here, and I'm sure that the mayor knew it, I'm sure that Da Vinci Center knew it, they heard exactly what you said the other week, so thank you for that.
Thanks, sir.
I, too, want to echo it. You were, I really appreciated you coming last night, it was excellent. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruggles?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Roger Ruggles, and I currently am on Eastern City Council, and I come to talk about the Da Vinci Science Center more from the perspective of someone who's taught college for thirty-five years. And I really believe, as the mayor said earlier, that the main thrust of this is education. And this is not only education for children, which is vitally important. I spoke to the college president, and I said, the possibilities of interaction with Lafayette are basically unlimited. The number amount of research projects, of student volunteering at the center, it just boggles my mind what could happen with this. But in addition to that, think about how this center will present technology and science to older people. This is, this is a struggle for a lot of people who are, have gone past that, you know, educational timeframe of their, of their life, and have moved into a society that has really become very technical, very science-oriented. And now they have a place that they can go and get a better understanding of manufacturing, of science, of computers, okay? All of this is just an enormous, enormous benefit to everybody. In addition, I would like to point out that this, this really does something that I have been trying to do for a long time, and that is build what I call our people infrastructure. As you get more and worse younger people educated and they become better potential employees, you've grown the workforce. And looking into the future and saying, hey, what are we going to be like in ten, twenty years? That's going to be surrounded by what our population is like in ten or twenty years. If we don't have the workforce, the companies won't come here. And this is really very, very, very important, to get our younger people a real good idea of these particular areas. Not all of them are going to go into those areas, not all of them want to go into those areas, but to get a very good core of those individuals to be able to go into that, into those areas, will just have this huge pool of people that will be potential employees for companies who will look at our area and say, hey, this is where I want to come because I can hire people here, okay? So, this not only is something that is going to reap immediate benefits once it's built, but it will have long-term benefits, too. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sir?
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Joseph Roy, I'm the superintendent of the Bethlehem Area School District and also a member, trustee on the Da Vinci Science Center Board. I'm enjoying this, the experience of being on this side of things, on this side of the public comment microphone. Maybe I'm just going to state the obvious this evening, and that is that the Da Vinci Science Center project will be an incredible boon to educational opportunities, not just in Easton, obviously, but in the county and in the entire region. I'd like to make three key points. One is that the STEM experiences and the, to have state-of-the-art technology is expensive, and in some ways, it's wasteful for school districts to replicate the same types of experiences from district to district. With the Da Vinci Science Center opportunity, we'll be able to have state-of-the-art experiences and exhibits that all the districts and all the children in the area, the county can come to, so it expands those opportunities, and we'll be able to integrate our curriculum into the experiences that are available at the Da Vinci Science Center. Two, this is also really, as was just mentioned, a workforce development project. I think that when we highlight the STEM careers, particularly the planned experience, a proposed factory floor experience, so we can demonstrate to students and families that manufacturing today is high-tech, and it's clean, and it's sophisticated. We, I think we struggle with that mindset that manufacturing is dirty, still dirty factory work, and we know that the manufacturing component of the Lehigh Valley region is critical, and also the human body experience that the mayor so graphically described. I think will be a great opportunity to expose young and old alike to exciting advances in healthcare, the healthcare industry, and another economic driver in the Lehigh Valley. So, we hit the manufacturing piece, and we hit the healthcare piece with a couple of the planned exhibits. So, I encourage the council to make a major commitment to the project, so we can make it a reality with a gift of, generous gift of ten thousand dollars, ten million dollars or more. Our schoolchildren in Northampton County will be able to visit Da Vinci Science Center for free, so we'll be able to have field trips come from all the school districts in, in the county for free, and also that we'll plan to have low-income families be eligible for free memberships. And that's critical because one of the challenges in schools, we have these huge ranges of experiences and preparedness that, that kids come, as they come to school, and a lot of that is background knowledge and background experiences, and if you don't have that, it's hard to make connections to do, to other learning in school. Having access for low-income families and children to be able to access the Da Vinci Science Center regularly with memberships really would build that background knowledge in the STEM fields that then helps them be more successful when they're in their academic classes in school. Makes a big difference. So, I appreciate your considerations, it's been a pleasure taking in for the first time a council meeting this evening, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's good to see you here all again tonight, and to see you, Mr. Vaughn, in person, and thank you, Chairman, and members of council for hearing me out one more time. I wish to first address some of the comments. Well, first, I'd like to thank all the people that spoke on behalf of Da Vinci this evening, and I have a number of board members here, and I really appreciate everyone coming out. Second, I'd like to comment on some of the comments that have been made earlier. First, there was a question raised earlier about Da Vinci Science Center not having a domicile in Northampton County, and I am pleased to report that at our November seventeenth meeting, our Board of Trustees approved the creation of nonprofit LLC subsidiary to be domiciled in Northampton County, and that will be effective by January one. So, we didn't want that to be any kind of issue associated with receiving funding from the county or also from other entities as well, so that should not be an issue. Second, there was reference made to real estate taxes and the potential loss of real estate taxes on the property that is the proposed site. The annual real estate taxes, I believe, are about a hundred thousand dollars. The trade-off in terms of additional earned income taxes, payroll taxes, sales taxes, and for the for-profit entities that might be running a retail operation or doing the catering will far exceed the loss in real estate taxes that would occur on that property. And then, third, I wanted to thank Jonathan Davis and all the restaurateurs that we met with this afternoon, but I want to especially thank Jonathan for his comments. And I think we had a terrific dialogue, and we look forward to working really closely in partnership with the city and the businesses in the city to develop this to truly be a community entity that benefits Easton and the surrounding community. So, we really appreciate the input and feedback that he's provided. The last thing I really wanted to share with you that I didn't have time to last evening, I was really just responding to the restaurant comments, and I want to be as transparent as possible, I'd like to provide an update first on the aquarium in the, in the Poconos, and also an update on state funding. So, given potential plans for an aquarium in the Poconos, Joe Moore and I actually traveled to Orlando earlier this week, and on Monday, we met with the principals at Ripley's Entertainment in their offices. If you ever get to go, they're great offices, the behind-the-scenes tours was phenomenal, but they were very, very gracious, and they were very pleased that we took the initiative to meet with them, and we essentially wanted to propose with them the opportunity for collaboration between our Science Center and the potential for an aquarium in the Poconos. They were very interested in collaborating with us on programming once a decision has been made. So, we will, we've established the relationship with them, we will continue to remain in dialogue, and we're waiting to monitor their progress. So, I wanted to report that to you. I also wanted to report in conjunction with that, my commitment to all of you to be totally transparent and update you on our plans. Some of you, I think, are familiar, but I think some are not familiar with the terms of the state funding that was announced, I don't know, maybe a few weeks ago, the twenty million dollars in state funding that came forward with the budget. So, the specific language in the statute, and I believe Joe Kelly is here and can affirm this, but the specific language in the statute was to support a science and education center. It didn't say in Easton, there was a lot of other legalese, but essentially, the intent was to support a science and education center in Easton. There are some conditions, not in the statute, but there are some conditions associated with that funding. If the aquarium project goes forward in the Poconos, then the funding cannot be used for aquatic exhibits in Easton, and that really is associated with public money from the state, not, making sure public money is invested in entities that don't compete with private activity. So, as you know, our Science Center proposes three main exhibit areas. The human body, you know, science in me, the technology area, the factory floor, technology in the home, technology in the community, and science in nature, and the aquatic exhibits are part of the science and nature area. Should the aquarium go forward in the Poconos, the state funding cannot be used for aquatic exhibits. If it does not go forward, the state funding can be used for that purpose. So, this has all been happening very rapidly over the last few weeks. So, I wanted to let you know, so, you know, what is our response to that? And we are developing a Plan B for incredible experiences that will be as compelling as were proposed with the aquatic experiences. You know, I have an amazing staff, they were the ones that came up with this hundred-foot human body concept, which will be a huge draw from, throughout the region, so I have no doubt that we can come up with some additional experiences beyond our, we're having skydiving now, we've got an observatory, you know, lots of things, but I have no doubt that should the aquarium go forward, that we can come up with some compelling experiences that will compete with Franklin Science Center and the Liberty Science Center and draw from a fifty to a hundred mile radius and achieve some of the attendance goals that we have projected. So, I want to keep you, continue to keep you updated, I think it's important that we have a partnership. You know, we've been just reviewing all this with the city, and so, I want to continue to keep you updated. I believe that this project will be transformative, I don't need to re-echo what some of the other people have just said. I think it's an opportunity for an incredible legacy for our children and grandchildren and schools, and I hope the council is prepared to support the project tonight, but I fully understand that you need to make the right decision as you believe is appropriate for the county. So, I really appreciate the opportunity for all of you that are considering this this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay. Council, comments?
Mr. Bell? After last night's meeting, I met with Mr. Davis, I expressed, you know, one, the gratitude that he, that he showed up, his points were, I'll just speak for myself, an eye-opener. It is refreshing to hear that he did meet with the mayor and Ms. Erickson to discuss the concerns, and it was a concern that I had. Mayor, I'm glad you're here tonight, and Uncle Rick's tight. I wore the wrong colors tonight. I make no bones about it, Thanksgiving, I'm a Phillipsburg guy, born and raised in Phillipsburg. I think when the sheriff was up for nomination, I came up with the old line, it is, it is one city separated by a river. That being said, I remember when Larry Holmes was the champ, and he wanted to reinvest in Easton, and at that point, I don't think that the city was, was as receptive as they should have been. I've seen the transition of Easton, and the circle especially, to a much better place that I could go with, with my family, my new family, and I'm not embarrassed to be down there. You can, you can walk around, you feel safe, I think the substation was an awesome move, and, and yes, I do frequent the circle sometimes in the after-hours, and the police presence down there is phenomenal. I, I just, I just wish that my hometown could follow the example that Easton is setting, and I think that the Da Vinci Center is going to be an asset to the area. And I just, again, I think it's just, it's just something that helps brag about where we're from, and it is, it is a hidden jewel. I mean, that, the fact that one of the three places that the Declaration of Independence was read is right in Northampton County. To me, as a history buff, that's phenomenal, so I am all in, I'm glad that the Da Vinci Center continues to listen to concerns, I hope they continue, and I hope this just becomes fruition.
Any others? No?
I'll say, before Peggy jumps on Nazareth. I, I will tell you that I've been here all my life, my children have been raised there, my grandchildren are here, and frankly, that's the way I'm thinking about this project. I'll tell you about the children, not, I mean, it's gonna be great for us, too, but the fact is that our kids, our children, our grandchildren may be experiencing something that they never would have had a chance to do. I've had the good fortune of watching, Sal and I went to school together at Quetzal, we went, I watched the city, huh? Well, Ken, yeah, Ken, thank you for reminding my age and everything. Mr. Brown was a student of mine, so when we taught together, but the fact is that Easton has turned a corner, and there was a lot of, there were a lot of rough times, and I watched, I was a Southside kid, I watched it change over the years, and I became very proud of it as a, as a graduate from Easton, and I can say that because Sal graduated from Notre Dame, he didn't graduate from Easton. And fact is, I went back and taught, I was proud to be a teacher there, and I left there and became a businessperson, and I became a businessperson in the valley also, so I think that Da Vinci has proven themselves tonight by reaching out across and talking to the people that had concerns. I think that that has to be done, that sets an example, and I have a great deal of respect for anyone that does that in business and any kind of corporate structure, so I, I feel very pleased and honored to have this happen, if we can do it.
Mrs. Farah?
Thank you. I have to say, this council has been in touch with Da Vinci for more than- I have to say, this council has been in touch with Da Vinci for more than a year. And I don't think there has ever been anyone who has been as dedicated and as detailed and as meeting and keeping us up to every last bit of information that's possible to make this science center happen. There's three prongs to this. The city money, the state money, and now tonight, we have our wonderful opportunity to fund this at the amount that it deserves. And I'm asking for $10 million tonight in an amendment. But I often told my students in school and so forth, and I often said, "Kids, there's three kinds of people in this world. There are those who make things happen, watch things happen in a passive way, and others who say, 'What happened?'" And I don't want the "what happened to Da Vinci" as it goes off into the sunset. I want us to be here, and we are the ones that help the three-pronged approach to make things happen. And so I will be offering an amendment for the funding of the Da Vinci Center.
Okay. Well, I guess now would be the time, if you'd like to offer that.
Okay, my amendment, basically, the ordinance stays the same. Go to page 2, under number 4A. And I would like to propose $250,000 a year from the 2005 hotel tax until a total of $10 million is reached, and thereafter, the funding shall cease. So it's relatively, it's the only change, I think, that's needed.
Well, there is a motion to amend Article 4A. Change the amount from $100,000 to $250,000, and strike $1 million, and make that $10 million from Mrs. Farrar. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bennell. It's a lot of money. Any comment on the proposed amendment?
Well, we take in about $330,000 a year. So, and as that fund, and I'm sure it's been projected that it'll grow by three, at least 3%, and so over the years, there's going to be money for others. It's not like we're giving everything to one entity.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Kraft, you to comment on that?
Are we, where do I start? You know, I mean, what you're proposing, Peg, is taking, you know, 85% of this hotel tax money is generated in the District 1 area, Bethlehem, you know, that area, okay? And you're proposing taking basically every cent of that money for the next 40 years, okay? You're telling everybody, I guess Mr. Haines is still here somewhere, you're telling all these people who have these hotels that, "Hey, thanks for giving us the money. We're giving it away to Easton for the next 40 years." And all those projects that you may have in the area to increase hotel, you know, stays and bring people here, forget it, it's gone. Till after I'm dead, this is going to be there. You know, so I'm totally against this proposal.
You're ignoring the fact that it's going to grow? You're ignoring the fact that proposal?
I'm not ignoring the fact that it's going to grow. I'm ignoring the hypothetical fact, hypothetical situation that you're making up that it's going to grow in leaps and bounds if they achieve 600,000, and we build hotels and everything in Easton, and it starts to grow that way. Yeah, you're right. But I'm not believing it.
Okay.
Okay? But to enjoin this council and every future council for 40 years, you know, that's how many elections, John?
I won't be running.
I won't be around. I'll be lucky, you know.
It's an ordinance, and it's a law, and laws can be changed if you find it so uncomfortable.
Well, I'm totally against this amount. This is insane.
Well, then you can vote for it.
If I can just follow up. I think the $1 million that Mr. Kraft and I are proposing is a good starting point. It's the exact same amount of money we put into the Steel Stacks project in Bethlehem. And I think that's fair, and I think, you know, if future councils do want to extend this or increase it, I think they would have that right. But I'm very comfortable with doing for Easton exactly what we did for Bethlehem. And I support the million that Mr. Kraft and I put forward. And again, if in the future, other councils do want to change this, they can always amend it. But I'm just not comfortable going to $10 million at this time.
You know, there's also possibly other funding streams that the new administration might have that we don't know about.
Mr. Dietz, you got a comment?
Miss, I want to agree. I mean, I'm very comfortable with the $1 million. Over the last two days, we've seen the plan change from a restaurant to not. I think their plan is too much, still too fluid to invest 40 years of commitment to that right now to get anywhere near that number. So I'm still comfortable with the million for now, and like I said, that they get further along, and I have to believe even that, you know, what Arts Quest did with that money, you know, they took a million, and they have a great thing down there, you know? So I think if it's a real good viable plan with a good blueprint, it'll work, you know?
Mr. Warner?
I'm just going to chime in here. We're up against Easton and Da Vinci. Let's be honest about it. The NIZ in Allentown has done things for that area. Bethlehem has always had many operations, and we funded many of their programs. We've been behind it. PBS, Arts Quest, we were there. North Hampton County was there for them. The combined involvement with PBS, Arts Quest would be more than $1 million, I believe, okay?
It was $2 million over 10 years.
$2 million over 10 years.
Million to each entity.
I would like, I agree, $10 million is a big bite. We have other projects that we have to worry about. I would like to amend it to $2 million to match those things that we've invested with. I can't do that yet, I know. I'm just, I'm pointing it out.
A discussion, okay?
That would be a suggestion. But the fact is that any step we take would be positive for moving this project ahead, even if it just means that the 12.5% of the million.
Okay. So we do have a motion of Mr. Gysinger?
I'm still going to comment on the motion. I'm going to ask the mayor to comment. Mayor, you're putting $30 million behind this, that's correct? Okay. And you're, no, City of Easton. No, I appreciate that. The City of Easton is going to commit $30 million to this project?
That's correct.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania said they're going to commit $20 million to this project.
That's correct.
Okay. How do you see the funding of this project going, and how do you see the impact on the City of Easton being the county seat of North Hampton County? What do you see?
When we looked at this project and put a bid in to move it from Lehigh County to North Hampton County, and just remember, if it doesn't come to Easton, it's going to Allentown. It's not going to Bethlehem, it's going to Allentown. That's where it was originally scheduled to go on the waterfront, because they have a criz at the waterfront. They have a NIZ in Bethlehem, but Bethlehem didn't want it, and they were looking at Allentown. We got involved when they decided, you know what? We better give Easton a chance, because we don't want to play politics. They gave us a shot, and we went all out. We didn't go all out until we looked at how we could fund, the RFP talked about 25% of the project from the municipality that would be located. Now, it's a lot easier to do that in Allentown with the criz, with the NIZ, but it's not so easy to do it in either Bethlehem or Easton. We looked at it totally separate from our general fund. We know that Crayola contributes about $1 million and a half dollars a year to our general fund. Parking, earned income tax, and what we have is an admissions tax, which is on all live entertainment like the Crayola Center, State Theater. Crayola Center is well over $300,000 a year. I mean, it's roughly two bucks or a buck, whatever it is, two bucks per person, and there are up to 400,000 people. So right there is $800,000 to $1 million a year. We looked at the numbers, what would it be if we had Crayola's numbers, but we had 600,000? How much parking? Would revenue be received? How much admissions tax, et cetera? Earned income tax, business tax? And it came up to about that we could fund a level debt at 450,000 people, we could fund that project. But we wouldn't get any money from that project for the city. What we would get is banking on additional business privilege tax from all the businesses that would benefit from that. We also made a decision that if we got to 600,000, if the numbers come out to 600,000, that the difference would not go to the general fund, but the city council could make a decision, the administration would recommend, it could be a third, a third, a third, the general fund, social services, and nonprofit tourism groups, like the State Theater, Signal Museum, the Nurture Nature, who are always asking for money. We don't have a pot of money to give them. So that's what we've looked at. We feel that very strongly, that the numbers would indicate that we could sustain a $30 million debt. Now, that may not be a bond issue, it may be some other financing that we're looking at. We're looking at a lot of different financing options, including the traffic patterns that may have to be changed with a TIP. We're looking at a lot of options. I mean, we're not that far down the road yet. We've already talked to investors, we've talked to the private sector doing a P3. We've talked to a lot of people and a lot of organizations, but that's how we expect to raise the money.
Mr. Dietz?
They're saying 600,000. So you think they'll bring in 1,700 people, average 365 days a year?
As I said, Crayola's bringing over 400,000 a person. And I will tell you this, I just met with Crayola. They were down to about 200,000 when they were looking to move. They were looking to move out of Easton. And we kept them there by buying out the McDonald's lease and transferring the National Canal Museum down to the canal era, the canal museum. So I believe that right now, with Crayola bringing in 400 to 450, they're still the largest, you know, they're the beta site. They have three other sites now. This is still the busiest.
Right.
By far. So I believe that the numbers are right for Da Vinci, but we will do our own study, that we will hire, Crayola's helping us select a person, a group to do that, and we'll validate the numbers. If the numbers come in under 450, we can't do 30 million.
And so what are your caveats on the funding for that? Like, what are the benchmarks or?
The only benchmarks we have is the attendance.
Okay.
Annual attendance. And then we do have some things, for example, as we talk to the restaurant tours today. Now that's part of our condition, and that'll be in writing, that they agree that they won't have the 250-seat restaurant setup. The other thing they agree to is that, number one, West Ward residents are our first priority on all jobs, not just West Ward, I should say, low-income people. Dr. Ruble spoke, and he talked about what his goal is, is to become our goal for this year. Our goal in Easton is to increase the earning capacity of our residents. We are the lowest per capita income in the entire Valley. We need to raise the level of income for them. And we could do that by, Da Vinci even talked about today, about training two years in advance, to start giving them the skill set to go into some more of the professional jobs, not just the rudimentary, you know, ticket taker type jobs. So that's one of our goals. And the other thing they agreed to today is that parking, not today, but before, when we talked about parking, we know we need a new garage at Pine Street. That one has outlived its useful life. It's on Terminal, it's Terminal, yeah, there's no doubt about it. It's over 45 years old, it had a 40-year life. Another garage on 4th Street. The parking, unlike Crayola, which is right behind the building, so people go in and out, our parking for Da Vinci is up in the northern part of the town, so they have to walk down 3rd Street to get to it. And if you look at your aerial that they gave you, the entrance is on South 3rd Street, just below City Hall. So there's some of the things that we're doing, because we're cognizant of the fact that they need to park, but we don't want them parking right on the same site.
Yeah. Because part of my concern was, in the original plan of the restaurant, that that was where they got a chunk of their 600,000. So you take that away, where's the?
No, 600,000 is just the science center, not the restaurant was privately owned, and they didn't care, it was a lease. So they didn't care whether they got 100 people a day or 1,000 people a day. The restaurant was really more of a destination restaurant, like you might see the rainforest at Disney World or so. You know, at that time, the aquarium was still there, it was going to be encasing the restaurant. That's gone. And value engineering hasn't been done yet on the entire building. That is only the most recent architect's rendering. That is still not the final rendering. I just want to make sure I should have said that before.
And when do you release your money to the project, then?
We don't release our money until the construction starts.
That's true. All right.
And we know we're going to have to do like the state grants or county grant. They'll pay it over, we'll release it as the construction begins, and then at the end, we'll refinance the whole 30 million.
So your vision is a science center that provides opportunity for low-income individuals to have jobs?
That's right.
For low-income families to educate their children?
That's even more important, yes.
And for?
They've agreed that for our 30 million, our low-income students go for free.
And for the individuals in North Hampton County and the surrounding area to have a facility that will allow children, schoolchildren regardless of income, to be better educated in the STEM, core STEM items.
Let me give you an example. We don't have a lot of industry in Easton. We have a lot of industry in the eastern area. Palmer Industrial Park, the Forts, Victolik, world headquarters, large pipe maker. They have 50 machinists, two shifts. They would love to hire a third shift, they can't find 24 machinists. Their bigger concern, and that's, you know, Jerry Seifert left, but that's a great job. He was a machinist at Bethlehem Steel. Their bigger concern is all of their machinists are over 55 years of age. So they need to replace them. And I think, our good friend, Superintendent Joe, there he is. He said it best. We've got to convince these young people that manufacturing is no longer dangerous and dirty. It's clean. You go to Majestic Sportswear, which will soon become Under Armour. They have laser cutting machines, they have high-tech computerized sewing machines. They always have openings. School districts should just take 30 of their machines and put them in a classroom and teach seniors how to run those machines, and they can be gainfully employed as soon as they get out, and they're union jobs. They pay well. They pay well. They don't just do Major League Baseball. They also do Alder Brown for UPS, all those uniforms. That's what I think we need to have kids starting out at. They have to understand that, and we have to change the teacher's mindset that not every kid has to go to college. There's so many great trades that we need in this, you know, you go to B-Brawn and find out how many people they need to hire every day. Yes, Amazon's hiring every day, but that's the pickers and the shippers. The people that need to work are people like at B-Brawn and Victolik and Crayola. They're the jobs we have to really train our kids for. So that, yes, that's what I see as the most valuable portion of that.
Okay. And I appreciate it. Thank you, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, we still have a motion and a second on Mrs. Farrar's amendment to increase 4A to 250,000 a year, total to 10 million. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Well, this was why I asked the mayor to come up, and I appreciate his comments, Mr. President, since we're still, since I was still recognized on the floor at that point. I got to admit, when Mrs. Farrar kind of threw this out, I got taken back a little bit, because it is a big number, and it's a long time. But when we're talking about trying to compare it to what went on at PBS or compare it to what went on in Bethlehem, Bethlehem had a private entity called the Sands that was really, whoa, 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 wait, but it was coming. And it's totally changed what goes on down there. Yes, it is. It is totally true. You cannot compare what has gone on on that steel mill property without comparing what's happened at the Sands. Now, I understand the argument, and I respect it, that right now, the majority of hotel tax is coming out of the City of Bethlehem. I get that. I really do. But I also feel that if Crayola can bring in 450,000, then this project can easily bring in 600,000 that is projected. And while it may be a staggering number, every council, every year, just like we had the chance every year to say no to the 100,000, is going to have the opportunity to say no to the 250,000. And the opportunity that this provides for the development of the City of Easton, the improvement of North Hampton County as a whole, I think is worth a $10 million investment, and I'm going to back this. Thank you.
And I think you have to understand that having this number dedicated, even though it's stretched out over a lot of years, this leverages all the private money, all the other foundations, all the other monies to come into this project. It shows that there's a total commitment, a huge commitment, from the county, the state, and the city. You have the county, now they can go out, and I know Amy Ritter's here, and she's doing the fundraising. So it's important that we show a huge commitment to this project.
Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Kraft, and then we'll call the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, you know, as a member of the LVEDC, Mr. Panow, or Mayor Panow, sorry, brings up a pretty good point, that there is, there's been a recognized deficit of skilled machinists, laborers, rather skilled laborers, that's been brought to the attention of a lot of the local community leaders, and a consortium has been thought up. And there's actually plans to try to attack this from a multi-pronged approach. And the mayor was sitting in, he knows, he's on those board meetings as well. And this is, I personally think this is an integral part of coming up with a solution to this problem. The Lehigh Valley actually ranks kind of low when it comes to per capita education comparatively to the rest of the state, which is surprising to me when I heard the numbers, because we have so many colleges here and so many, you know, high-tax school districts, but I'll leave that for another discussion. You know, like Peggy says, you know, this is a number spread out over 40 years. This isn't, we're not taking $10 million out of our budget tomorrow and handing it over to DaVinci. This is a number that says a commitment over the long term, which helps leverage other dollars, in particular, private dollars, which is what they need the most. So I will also be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kraft?
Well, I just have a couple of things to say. If it doesn't go here, it's not going to Allentown, because Allentown refused it. DaVinci asked for a ton of money. I spoke with the mayor there. They have a NIS, they have the finest thing to put it there. I figured, why wouldn't it go there? I'd even bet you here, that's where the aquarium was going, to Allentown. Their ask was so high that Allentown said no. They came to Bethlehem, the same exact thing happened. Their ask was so high, they said no. They came to Easton South, figured out how to get 30 million dollars. So, you know, that aside, you know, Arts Quest, whether the Sands is there, whether whatever it was, they got a million dollars over 10 years, and they leveraged that into a project that is way more money than this aquarium cost. Okay? And, you know, well, it's not even going to be an aquarium anymore, because we fund this money, and all of a sudden, they build the one up there, it's done. It's going to be a nannatorium for, you know, frogs and stuff. So, I mean, you don't really have a plan. I'm a co-sponsor of this to give them what I see is an all-right amount to start out here, this 100,000 a year for 10 years, like we did for the entities in Bethlehem. I can't see us taking all that money, and I know Peggy say it's going to grow, but it isn't going to grow until it's built. And that isn't going to happen for another eight years, or five years, at the best. So then the taxes will start growing. So from that point forward, any project that comes up that's shovel-ready, and we know a few of them that are there, that are ready to go, have no money to have this kind of grant given to them, so they can leverage more money. You're taking everything. And I, for that reason, you know, I'm going to stick with what we have here, and I'm going to vote no to your proposal, because it's just way out there. In 40 years, I told you this on the phone, I'll be dead before 40 years is over, and I'm not going to enjoin all future councils to this endeavor.
But when you're 96, I'll invite you to the meeting.
Just one more comment, if I may. I've been thinking about this, you know, in 1999, I believe that's when Allentown began getting information, and in Bethlehem, it was like 2012, all right? That's like, there's a big bridge gap. Easton didn't get any, they never had a NIS or anything like that up until 2015. I believe that's correct, Mayor. 2015 is when they started getting money, grants for development downtown?
No.
That's what I'm saying. You had nothing like that. So there was a disadvantage to all this. So it's a catch-up, and I believe in the project. I looked at some of the numbers at a 40-year program. It's a long time, but we can do it if we had to. I am not opposed to reducing that number. I've told Lynn many times that the 15 million we originally started out was too much to bite off. And even at 10 million, it was, it's still iffy, but the fact is, if it's doable, we can do it as a council. We can move it forward, and we can work out the numbers. I will be voting for it.
Okay. So let's call the vote on Mrs. Ferraro's amendment. Can we call the roll, please?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
Okay. So now on the ordinance as amended.
I'd like to remove my sponsorship of this ordinance.
Would anybody like to?
I'll pick it up.
Mr. Bennell, little sponsor in his place. Any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? There, Mr. Bennell?
I just want to add my two cents. I, you know, I know what Peggy was shooting for the moon. I'm glad that I was able to co-sponsor this, get the conversation started. It is the willpower, and it's nice to see that we are moving forward.
What? I couldn't hear you.
I said, I knew you were shooting for the moon with the 10 million. I'm glad I could co-sponsor just to engage in the conversation, and I'm glad it's moving forward.
Okay. So then the vote is on the ordinance as amended. Can we call for the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
No.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
Passes by a vote of five to four. Okay. Congratulations. Next item is a public hearing on the ordinance titled "An Ordinance Providing for the Conveyance of a 1.205-acre Right-of-Way Owned by Northampton County Located in Allentown Township to the Rockefeller Group Development Corporation to Undertake Certain Public Roadway and Infrastructure Improvements, Including the Widening of Willowbrook Road and Improving the County Control Bridge Located Adjacent to Wayne Group Park." This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Kraft and Mr. Dietz at the November 16 meeting. Public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled for this evening. And at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing on the ordinance.
Would you like to wait?
Can we take a five-minute break by the exit?
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the Allentown Township Development Ordinance? Okay. Now therefore, it be enacted and ordained by the Northampton County Council as follows. County Council hereby grants and conveys to Rockefeller Group Development Corporation in consideration of the sum of $100,000 in improvements and upgrades to Wayne Group Park, not to exceed $150,000. A deed of right-of-way over the lands of Northampton County identified as Tax Parcel Number M52-3A, as more fully depicted in the plan attached herein as Exhibit A. The deed of right-of-way referenced above shall include a description substantially similar to the map and description heretofore, and made part of Exhibit A, and shall provide to Rockefeller Group Development Corporation as described and set forth in the letter of understanding attached hereetofore, and made part hereof as Exhibit B. Any comments or concerns from council?
No.
Yeah, yes, please. Any comments on the Rockefeller from council? Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Rugus came in and did discuss, and I think pretty much everybody was here, he went through this with us at one point. I don't think we did have any questions at him at that point. So I'm just refreshing people's memories that this is, and we were agreed by administration on this.
Yeah. I just drove through there today, as a matter of fact. The building that's going on there is incredible. It's really amazing. All right, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Passes unanimously. Next up, oh, is there any other old business to come before council at this time? Okay. Then we'll move into new business. First item is consideration of municipal park project resolutions, and we will vote on each of these separately. The first item is Allentown Township Phase II Dog Park Improvements Project. And at this time, I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
All right. Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council, and I'll jump down to number two here. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $70,004 as a Northampton County contribution to Phase II Dog Park Improvements Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
And this was discussed and recommended at the Open Space Committee meeting, was it two weeks ago? Any further, three weeks, any further discussion on the Allentown Township Dog Park? Okay. Can we call for the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Bethlehem Township House Nick Memorial Park
Improvements Phase III Project, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council, again, jumping down to number two. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $73,999.76 as a Northampton County contribution to the Post Nick Memorial Park Improvements Phase III Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Okay. Again, this was discussed and recommended by the Open Space Committee three weeks ago. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Next item is the Freemansburg Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead Americans with Disabilities Act Safety Improvements Project, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $25,000 as a Northampton County contribution to the Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead ADA Safety Improvements Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Okay. Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee three weeks ago, and a recommendation for approval was made. Any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Amendment to Resolution Number 118-2016, Lehigh Township, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
All right. Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate, slashed out the $56,500 to reduce to $34,993.04 as a Northampton County contribution to the Dubs Park Improvements Phase III Project.
Okay. Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee. A recommendation was made. Any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Lehigh Township Indian Trail Park Stream Bank Restoration Project. I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $36,158.31 as a Northampton County contribution to the Indian Trail Park Stream Bank Restoration Project.
Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee, and a recommendation to move ahead was made. Any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Lower Mount Bethel Township Monahan Property Fee Simple Acquisition Project. I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce the resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $30,510.52 as a Northampton County contribution to the, not, again, property fee simple acquisition project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee three weeks ago, and a recommendation to approve was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Lower Salken Township, Lower Salken Township Park Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $180,899, or 889.12 as a Northampton County contribution to the Lower Salken Township Parks Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Again, this was raised at the Open Space Committee, and a recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Moore Township, Moore Township Parks Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $45,171.36 as a Northampton County contribution to the Moore Township Parks Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Okay. Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee. A recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Borough of Nazareth Tennis Court Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Dietz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore, be resolved by Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $3,946.71 as a Northampton County contribution to the Tennis Courts Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Okay. And again, discussed at the Open Space Committee, and a recommendation for approval was made. Any further discussion? There being none, can we call the vote? Next item is the Moore Township, Moore Township Parks Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate, slashed out the fifty-six thousand five hundred to reduce to thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and four cents as a Northampton County contribution to the Dubs Park Improvements Phase Three Project.
Okay. Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee. A recommendation was made. Any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Lower Salkin Township, Lower Salkin Township Park Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate one hundred eighty thousand dollars eight hundred ninety-nine, or eighty, eight hundred eighty-nine and twelve cents as a Northampton County contribution to the Lower Salkin Township Parks Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, their remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Again, this was raised at the Open Space Committee, and a recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Moore Township, Moore Township Parks Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate forty-five thousand one hundred seventy-one and thirty-six cents as a Northampton County contribution to the Moore Township Parks Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, their remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee. A recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the Borough of Nazareth Tennis Court Improvement Project, and I'll call on Mr. Deetz to introduce that resolution.
Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County Council. Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate one hundred eighty thousand dollars eight hundred ninety-nine, or eighty, eight hundred eighty-nine and twelve cents as a Northampton County contribution to the Lower Salkin Township Parks Improvement Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, their remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Again, this was discussed at the Open Space Committee meeting three weeks ago, and a recommendation for approval was made at that time. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Deetz?
Now therefore be resolved by Northampton County-
Got to vote, go.
You were doing so well.
Matt, they call that autopilot. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Okay. Then the next item under new business is consideration of the two thousand eighteen Northampton County Budget and Capital Improvements Plan. First item is a public hearing on the two thousand eighteen proposed county budget. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel regarding the budget? There being none at this time. Any comments from members of council? Okay. Then we will move into the consideration of the Personnel Request Resolution, and these two will be voted on separately. I'm sorry. First item is the Corrections and Fiscal Affairs position, and I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce this resolution.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of accountant, two, pay grade CS twenty-five dash one A, salary fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars, shall be eliminated in the Department of Corrections effective January first, two thousand eighteen. It is further resolved that one full-time position of accountant, two, pay grade CS twenty-five dash one A, salary fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars, shall be created in the Department of Fiscal Affairs effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Okay. This was discussed yesterday during the amendment's hearing process. Recommendation was made to move forward. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Next item, District Attorney's Office, and I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce that resolution.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of Assistant District Attorney, pay grade RS zero-seven dash one A, salary forty-nine thousand three hundred and six dollars, shall be eliminated in the Department of District Attorney effective January first, two thousand eighteen. It is further resolved that one full-time position of Assistant District Attorney, pay grade CE zero-three dash one A, salary sixty thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars, shall be created in the Department of District Attorney effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Again, this was discussed at the budget hearing. A recommendation for approval was made. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?[970.22]
Grace Dale Nursing Home effective January 1st, 2018. It is further resolved that one full-time position of nursing home fiscal technician billing, pay grade CS-18-03-C, salary grade $41,530, shall be created in the Department of Human Services Grace Dale Nursing Home effective January 1st, 2018. It is further resolved that three full-time positions of nursing home fiscal specialist, pay grade CS-21-01-A, salary grade $43,663, shall be created in the Department of Human Services Grace Dale Nursing Home effective January 1st, 2018.
Okay, this was discussed during the Human Services Budget Hearing as well as yesterday during the amendments process. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to one.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The 2005 hotel tax that we tabled one and we were going to vote on another one for hotel, for historic ethylene, I don't see them on our agenda.
That would be under amendments.
That's a $200,000.
But did we go through that already?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I needed a little help here.
You want me to read all that stuff over again?
Okay, so the Human Services Grace Dale was an eight to one vote.
Then the next item under new business is consideration of changes to the 2018 proposed unfunded positions resolution, and I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce that.
Whereas the county executive submitted the proposed 2018 Northampton County budget on October 3rd, 2017, and whereas on page 18 of the proposed 2018 budget contains all the unfunded positions for 2018, which included 10 full-time and two part-time positions, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the one full-time position of print shop specialist and one full-time position of support services supervisor in the Department of Administration, the one full-time position of clerical technician three in the Department of Administration, agriculture extension, the one full-time position of deputy director and the two part-time positions of telecommunicator in the Department of Administration Emergency Management Services, and the three full-time positions of clerical technician three in the Department of Court Services Civil Division will be eliminated effective January 1st, 2018. It is further resolved that one full-time position of warden in the Department of Corrections will remain unfunded effective January 1st, 2018. Be it further resolved that one full-time position of hazard mitigation disaster recovery manager in the Department of Administration Emergency Management Services will be funded effective January 1st, 2018. Be it further resolved that one full-time position of director of court services and one full-time designated exempt position of clerical specialist in the Department of Court Services will be funded effective January 1st, 2018.
Okay, these were items that we all went through yesterday during the amendments process. I think there was some discussion earlier. Any further discussion regards to the elimination or funding of these positions? Mr. Geisinger?
I made my position clear yesterday, Mr. President, that due to the bulking of all of this, I cannot vote for this as it stands.
Okay. Any others? Okay, then Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes. Peg's not here?
Peg's here.
Peg's here.
Okay.
Yes or no?
Peg, we're eliminating the positions that are unfunded.
Passes by a vote of six to three.
Then the next item is consideration of criteria for raises resolution. I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce that ordinance, that resolution.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2018 salaries of career exempt career service in Department of Human Services career service, civil service full-time employees not within collective bargaining units who have been employed by the county for four years or more and not at the top of their pay scale effective January 1st, 2018, shall receive a step increase on their respective pay scales.
Again, this was discussed at length during the budget amendments hearing yesterday. Is there any further discussion at this time? Ms. Zembo, can we call for the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to two.
Passes by a vote of seven to two.
I'm sorry, I voted incorrectly. I was coming in and I had lost my train of thought, so I wanted to vote no on the Court Services.
Okay.
So that'll change that to a five to four.
Then that would be five to four?
Right.
Five to four.
Okay, so that would be a five to four. Yeah, you know, I agree it is, has been a political patronage job, but it doesn't have to be, and it is part of the administrative code. And I, maybe we should look into the administrative code if you want to eliminate the position. All right, next item is the adoption of the 2018 real estate tax millage ordinance. We already did have the public hearing and discussion. Any further discussion on the millage ordinance? Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, this is my discussion. You know, I went and I heard Lamont on his campaigns, and pretty passionate that we didn't need to have an 11.8. And then with the executives now looking at what he's looking at for the future for 2018, he doesn't think we needed an 11.8. And we've funded, you know, very rigorously, the stabilization fund. So I think that that was the purpose. I put that 11.8 in. I would say that I would, I'd make a motion that this is reduced to 10.8. Hold back that one mill.
I will second that amendment.
John? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, Mr. Dietz?
A comment on it is, you know, I realize we reduced it, we put into the stabilization fund in this time. How do we put the full in? And we had this deduction, we'd be deficit spending right now. I'd be comfortable doing the half-mill reduction. I mean, we're, you know, a lot of project, we talk about the prison still going on, and I think we're prudent to do a half-mill reduction.
Well, I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion, a second, on the one-mill reduction, correct?
Are we discussing?
It's open for discussion.
The amendment proposed by...
Well, you wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft, I appreciate that. We have $17 million now committed to the stabilization fund. We have $14 million, we have enough money to buy the Human Services building set aside if we pass the budget as amended here. We have, we came in four years ago, we were looking at what might be a $11 million, was an, as stated by the county executive, an $11 million fund. We now have, as far as the numbers I understand, in excess of $30 million in the general fund. I cannot see any reason for the citizens of Northampton County to continue to bear the burden of this tax as it was stated three years ago. It just doesn't make sense. We are giving, we are imposing a burden upon them which is not necessary. The county is in good fiscal health, is financially stable, and this budget can maintain it without any issues. So therefore, I totally support what Mr. Phillips has asked to do, and yes, we should roll it back.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kraft?
Well, I know I can't curse, but, you know, this is a really, really, really low-handed thing to do, to put the budget into a deficit spending. That guy over there did this budget based on the millage rate that you have right now. So you're going to have the budget out of whack and in deficit spending to even meet this by lowering your millage rate. If he wanted to lower our millage rate when he knew he wasn't going to win, he didn't, when he knew, when he thought he was going to win, this budget came through at this millage rate. Now that he thinks he's, now that he lost, he's like, hey, screw it, let's give it back. Lamont wanted to give it back, but let's Lamont figure out what he wants to give back. He asked for a tax decrease every year he was here on council. Actually asked to give money back to the people, not a decrease, to give them a refund. Let him figure that out. But you can't go and honestly do this, as you call yourself, we're good government, we're this, we're that, we came here to run on the Tea Party promise of no taxes, and you raise the taxes. Now budget's set on that. It's going to be out of balance, it's against the Home Rule Charter to do that. I don't think it's your place to take it right now. If you wanted this, you just throw the whole thing out and let it be restated. Let him do all his figures over again, do the whole budget over again at the lower millage rate. You're spending money you don't have. Now you're going to go and give raises to people and give step increases and worry about a jail and worry about everything else, when you're automatically putting the next administration on their heels where they're going to have to raise taxes. And I think it's a really shitty thing to do, and yeah, I cursed. It's a really shitty thing to do, underhanded, and you people are despicable for even putting it up there. It's way underhanded.
Mr. Bennell?
I keep my mind...
I don't even know where to begin with that.
Start at the beginning.
I'll start at the beginning. Four years ago, when we got in here, it was, it was, the budget was a mess. And we got, we inherited something that I don't think any of us when we campaigned knew how bad it was. And we took the hit. Mr. Phillips took probably more of a hit than any of us because he was known as the Tea Party candidate. And I know the people in those circles, and I know what you heard, I heard it too. Now we have, again, Mr. Kraft, you just actually furthered our case. Mr. McClure constantly said we didn't need a tax increase, he said we could, that he wanted the lower...
Yeah, let him figure it out next year.
Now he's coming in, he's saying the same thing, we didn't need it, so I don't see it.
You're going to give him a budget, and you're going to decrease the amount of money, the projected revenue by lowering your taxes. I mean, ask Duran, ask the fiscal people what it's going to do to the budget, and how you're going to put him in deficit spending. John got a gift. You guys gave John a gift. You gave him the easy way out, he didn't have to raise taxes, he could have said no, but he didn't. He took that money, and he made it look like he was the shining altar boy that could do nothing wrong, because he had $8 million.
So you had absolutely no, no, wait, you had absolutely no problem voting for a $19 million deficit budget when we came in? You had no problem voting for that? But now you're worried about what might be a $3 or $4 million budget? That is hypocritical.
Go ahead, you just walk out of here and give a tax decrease and ruin the budget that's stated, and you can live with it.
You know, quite frankly, I have heard Mr. Kraft consistently tell this council over and over, we do not need to increase the taxes. And now hypocritically, he's telling us, we can't lower them. I mean, what is your point, Mr. Kraft?
You're violating the Home Rule Charter, Mr. Vaughn. If you paid attention to the last four years, you might have learned something.
How are we violating the Home Rule Charter? Why don't you explain that?
Hey, the question here is on the amendment to reduce the millage rate.
And this is a debate, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, let's keep it to how and why. Okay, Mr. Phillips?
Could we ask Mr. Hammond to come in and discuss the effect?
Certainly.
Duran, are you ready to address this?
Thought you wish you would have left with the division crowd.
Should have gone home at nine.
You asked me to come forward.
I believe the question is, what would be the effect of reducing the millage rate from 11.8 to 10.8 on the budget, and how does that reflect with regards to the Home Rule Charter?
The one-mill reduction would equate to $8 million of real estate taxes. As far as what that would mean to the budget, there would, decisions would have to be made how to either cut the budget by $8 million, or subsidize the budget with fund balance from the general fund, which is only the county executive can do because council under section 704, as we all know, cannot alter any revenues in the budget.
Okay, so, and it is within his purview if this budget is approved by this council to do so, on his own recommendation tonight?
For council to cut?
No, for him, no, for us to set the millage and for him to find a way to do it based on his recommendation.
Yes, or council, you know, I guess, you had two alternatives.
You had the two alternatives.
Or a combination.
Right.
Counsel cannot raise estimates of revenue.
That's correct.
However, the executive could, if he chose to do so, add fund balance to the revenue side of the ledger.
That's correct.
Okay. As far as I'm aware, he has not done so at this time.
When this, when these amendments were presented, as they were presented at the beginning of tonight, was the budget in balance?
Yes.
Okay, so we have already eliminated $3.5 million of it, of that, by taking out the money that was going to go to the reserve. I'm asking Mr. Hammond, and I have the floor.
That's correct.
Okay. So in that particular scenario, the most that we could be deficit spending, all things being the same, is $4.5 million.
Under that scenario?
Under that scenario. Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Okay. So I guess the question is, is the executive proposing to add $8 million to the fund balance, or do those of you who wish to support the amendment have $8 million where you would like to cut from the budget?
Is that a question to the executive or...
That is a question to the executive and/or members of council.
Well, as I think was just stated, it's a $4.5 million differential at this point.
Okay.
I have that on the floor, I want to withdraw it.
Okay, so the motion has been withdrawn?
And I'd like, I'd like to make another motion, to make it a half-mill reduction. That'll cover that $4 million, and we won't have to do anything. We have that $4 million in hand.
All right, so now we, the motion to reduce by a mill has been withdrawn. Now we have a motion to reduce by a half-mill. Is there a second for that, seconded by Mr. Bennell? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reduce the millage to 11.3. Any discussion on that?
I...
Mr. Geisinger?
There was absolutely no issue. Four years ago, when council said, we're going to deficit spend $19 million, we had to go through the first year trying to find money. We had to go through the second year reaching into the general fund because we needed to turn things around. Things were turned around by this administration. It's there. There is no reason to continue to ask the people of Northampton County to carry this burden at that mill, at a half-mill, or whatever it may be. There is over $30 million in that fund. We have done that job, we have done it right, and now we're saying, well, we're going to give you back part of it. But even though everything's funded, even though the building is funded, even though the reserve is funded, we're only going to give you half of it back. It's still a tax without a reason. I'm floored.
Mr. Brown, you'd like to address it?
Yes, if I may, thank you, council. Since I introduced the request to council to reduce the millage to a full mill of 10.8%, should council find and pass that millage, then I will modify the revenues to balance the budget from the general fund to do so.
So we still have a motion and a second for the half-mill reduction. Any further discussion on that?
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Exec, just to be clear, you're confident you could find the 4.5 million?
Sure.
It's four, four for the half.
Four.
The, my request is for the full mill. I will balance it at full mill reduction.
Then I withdraw my second.
Okay, second is withdrawn for the half?
Then I will put this...
Mr. Dietz, you're going to second the half? Okay, so we have a second on the half now. Any further discussion on the half? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote on the half-mill reduction?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
No.
And Mr. Bennell?
No.
Passed by a vote of four to five.
I'm going to make a motion to take a full mill.
Okay, so we have a motion for the full-mill reduction.
Second.
10.8 mills by Mr. Bennell, seconded by Mr. Geisinger. I think we've already discussed this, any further discussion on it?
I'd just like to say, I mean, your deficit spending, if he's pulling into the reserves to fund this, this cut you're asking for, your deficit spending, you're going back to where you came from. If he wanted to do this, if this wasn't an underhanded deal, he would have put a budget forward with the millage rate lowered from day one. If you can't see that, I don't know how to help you guys. It's going to be out of balance, it's, 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 it's an underhanded, it's an underhanded thing to do, for you to do to the next council and the next executive coming in.
I'm going to ask you one, one question, Mr. Phillips. How many years have you sat on this council?
Six.
And every single budget has been out of balance except this one, and you have approved it. That's, that's all I'm going to say.
Mrs. Ferraro?
And I've sat through budgets reductions, I mean, I remember Wayne Brew, we reduced it, and Mr. Heckman will remember that one. At this point in time, we reduced, Dr. Brackville wanted to do a 10-mill, 1-mill, 10% decrease, and it was not voted on, I mean, it didn't pass, but I don't think this is an inappropriate time to vote for a tax decrease.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Each of the, each of the budgets, when I came in '14, there was a $17.5 million use of general fund money to balance the budget. Through management and process improvements, we returned that to the general fund. Each subsequent year, we reduced that to 10.2, 8.2, and this year, zero. So last year, the 2017 budget, which we're finishing up, had 8.2 million dollars of general fund money allocated to that. We've managed, managed that to the point where we didn't actually need that money through finding efficiencies in the system. That's the same opportunity the next administration could follow if they choose to, should you support the...
All right, Mr. Dietz?
Yeah, I've been sitting on this, and, you know, I would, obviously, as a taxpayer and servant here, I'd love to reduce the tax on it. The unfortunate part, in my opinion, is how late it was brought up with it. Second part is, and I'm not going to say any names because there are certain people who are that didn't, but there was comments made after council meetings that, watch the next, let's do a millage deduction, and watch the next budget, next council try and balance it, next administration. And I think that is poor servants of the people of the county, and I'm pretty embarrassed that it was set.
I'll just add, I felt...
That wasn't me.
It wasn't me. I'm, anyway, I feel comfortable with the half-mill because we did change that fund balance. So I was very comfortable with that. I'm just not comfortable with the full mill. I don't know what, what the future portends, but, but we did take action earlier that I felt comfortable with. I'm not sure going the full 1-mill is in the best interest right now.
I think we should rethink that.
Okay, but we have a motion and a second on the mill reduction. Do we want to vote? Let's vote, call a vote on that.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
No.
And Mr. Kuzick?
No.
Passed by a vote of three to six.
Fails by a vote of three to six.
Well, what about the, the half-mill?
We already voted down.
Half-mill failed.
Can we have a vote on the mill right now?
All right, would anybody like to make any other motions at this time? Okay, then, then it is hereby ordained and enacted that the millage rate for real estate tax purposes for the year 2018 shall be set at 11.8 mills. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
No.
Passed by a vote of six to three.
Next item is consideration of salary resolutions, and I will call on Mr. Bennell to introduce those.
All right, Mr. President, you want me to go through all of them?
We're just doing part-time professional employees is the first one. Do we have that, part-time professional? Ah, got it.
John? Read the pay scale?
No, just the resolution. You don't have to read the whole pay.
Thank you.
We went through this yesterday.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2018 salaries of part-time professional employees shall be as indicated in the attached pay scale.
Okay, and this was discussed yesterday during the amendments process. Is there any further discussion? Okay, then let's call for the vote.
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of six to three.
Passes by a vote of six to three. Next is full-time employees, and I'll call on Mr. Bennell to introduce that resolution.
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2018 salaries of career service and exempt employees not within collective bargaining units whose job classifications are within the parameters of the Northampton County Career Service and Exempt Pay Scales respectfully shall be as indicated on the attached pay scales.
Okay, and these reflect the same scales as last year. However, we, earlier, we did pass the resolution granting the step to those employees with four or more years of experience. Any further discussion on this? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Geisinger?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of six to three.
Passes by a vote of six to three. Next is the public hearing on the proposed capital improvements plan. At this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing on the proposed capital improvements plan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council regarding the proposed capital improvements plan? Any members of council? Okay, I'll just say this, I absolutely agree with Mr. Brown that the jail does have to be addressed. jail does have to be addressed. Unfortunately, elections do have consequences and the next executive is not in favor of this. And I, I do favor eliminating it because of that and moving that funding to someplace where it would be more productive. Just putting a budget line item and having him do an amendment sometime in the middle of next year, I don't think that's good government. So, any further discussion on the capital improvements plan? Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Excuse me, John.
Yes.
I am terribly sorry. There's so much going on and I've been looking at some stuff.
Okay.
Bear with me. Would you, would you repeat really what you just said?
Okay, so.
I sort of got, I lost, I lost, I lost my train of thought.
Okay, so, we are at the public hearing on the proposed capital improvements plan, and what I said was this. Earlier this evening, the executive indicated his concern for the situation with the jail. I agree with him. Unfortunately, the voters spoke and the next administration is not in favor of that proposal. So I think it's prudent to move that money to where it will be used productively, and that includes the farmland where we will get additional matching state money. It was my train of thought. Yeah, livable landscapes where we have a proven record of getting stuff done. Mr. Koch's done a wonderful job with that funding we provided last year, and we all know that improvements or new county morgue are absolutely necessary. And I think that the next administration is willing to work with us on that, and I just think that, you know, maintaining that line item just to be stubborn, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense. So, you know, while I, no shock, while I didn't vote for Mr. McClure, I do intend to work with him to move the county forward and do some things when we do agree that we can get things done. So, I, I will be, and as part of the amendments process, I intend to remove the jail, the new jail proposal and introduce the morgue or forensic center to that when we get to that. Okay? But we're not at the amendments part, are we?
No.
Okay, that was just the public hearing, so I wanted to make my thoughts known. All right, any further comments on the public, on the capital improvements? All right, next item is consideration of amendments to the proposed 2018 budget and 2018 proposed capital improvements plan resolution. I just want to note that in order to cover the raises for the step increase, there is a thirty, thirty, $330,000 line item from corrections personnel used to cover that for the raises. Okay, so at this point, I need a motion for that. Moved by Mr. Craft. I'll second that. Okay, that is to add the money to cover for the raises for step increase for the four-year employees. Okay, can we call for the vote, please? Who can? Mr. Craft and myself.
Okay, Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giesinger?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to two. Okay, so now we are on to the proposed 2018 budget
as amended, right?
Well, you have to do, you have to do the amendments as amended.
Oh, okay, okay, so that was an amendment to the amendments.
Amendment to the amendments.
Okay, all right, so now we have to vote on the amended resolution. Which one is that?
The attached.
Ah, okay, so it's the one with the amendments attached.
Okay.
All right.
And, Mr. President?
Yes.
Cast a question?
Yes.
Did, was there a dollar amount?
Yes, $330,000.
Did we say that?
I'm sorry.
That's what we voted on.
Yes.
Yeah, I got that, but it was $300,000.
$330,000.
So we, we voted on to amend this, these amendments?
These amendments, yes.
Now we're going to have a question.
Yes, now this is collectively all the amendments from, yes, that we did yesterday, right?
And we have the one that has to be taken off the table.
Are we changing anything additionally?
Do new amendments come yesterday or do they come in the past?
This is all of the amendments.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
The ones that are tabled are taken out of here, the ones that are amended are put in here. There's everything we need to talk about yesterday.
So yours is out of there.
But what about the Da Vinci?
That's out.
That's out.
It was tabled yesterday.
It was tabled.
Hey, you already gave them $800,000.
So I have to bring it off the table.
Again?
It's on because it's been funded by ordinance.
No, she's talking about something, she's talking about that.
Oh, the extra half a million.
So somebody would have to untable it to get it back on.
So, okay.
Duran has a question.
Yes.
Excuse me, I do have a question. As far, I prepared the amendments for you.
Okay.
The question I have, though, in light of the ordinance that was passed in regards to Da Vinci, does that require any funding in 2018? Because that would be an additional amendment that would have to be added.
That's out of the 2005 hotel tax.
Right, but it's not, it doesn't show up in all the amendments.
Right.
No.
Right, so you have to amend that. Now there's only 250, 67, 80,000 dollars left in that general fund balance.
I'm not sure, I'm not, well, I don't know if it's 500, I don't know.
It was 730,000 when we started.
There's 730, we gave 200.
We gave Haines 200,000 and you want to give?
And we were going to give Da Vinci 500 was my proposal.
No, you're giving 250 already.
What does he want?
You're giving them 250.
You give them 250 a year for four years.
That's 250 next year.
Right, then you have to amend the amendments to run through that.
Thank you.
I'm just making you aware of that because of the ordinance that you passed.
Well, we have to do that right now.
Okay.
Okay.
But then what about any extra money for them next year?
Okay.
All right, so, we need, yeah, okay, so we need another amendment to the amendments.
Yes.
Okay, now, do we have a motion to, I believe we're looking to add the 250 from the hotel tax, 2005. Moved by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Warner. I think we had a lot of discussion on this.
We did.
Any further discussion on adding the 250 from the 2005 hotel tax based on the ordinance we just passed?
Please, no.
No, Ms. Zembo?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giesinger?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
No.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to one.
So, we have added the Da Vinci based on the ordinance.
That's 250.
Okay, that's 250, and we pledged 250 to?
200.
200 to the UNESCO site for one year.
Which leaves us approximately 300,000 more.
And that's already on there.
That's already on there.
And that's already here.
Yes.
So if we want to give any more to Da Vinci for one year out of that money that has accumulated?
You would need to amend it further.
Since we need to do one further amendment.
You would need to do a further amendment for additional funding.
And I would support a $250, so they get 500 next year.
250,000 additional from the 2005 hotel tax. Okay, so, that's your motion?
Yeah.
So we have a motion for an additional 250,000 from hotel tax, 2005 from Mrs. Ferraro. Is there a second?
Probably not.
Dies for lack of a second.
Thank God.
Are there any further amendments to the amendments? There being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Okay, who wants to?
I did.
I think I seconded it.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giesinger?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro? Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero. Getting there. Next is the consideration of adoption of the 2018 budget resolution resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2018 Northampton County Budgets Incorporated reference heretofore shall be adopted as amended this seventh day of December 2017. Number one, the general fund. Number two, the special revenue fund. Number three, capital project funds. Any further discussion on the 2018 There being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Craft?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giesinger?
No.
Passed by a vote of six to three.
Passes by a vote of six to three. All right, next item, consideration of adoption of the 2018 capital improvements plan resolved by the Northampton County Council that the proposed 2018 Northampton County Capital Improvements Plan shall be adopted this seventh day of December 2017. Any further discussion on the capital improvements plan? There being none. Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.